Mr. Michael Lewandowski, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Johnson? Navarro?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Aive?
Here.
Lopez Cunego? Here. Next, we have public comments on agenda topics. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic, will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct valium of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. Just waiting for the sheet.
Sheets.
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 All right. All right, first, we have Angel Sheik.
Good evening, everybody. I live in Homer Blaine, and I have children in both 33C and 205. I'm here today as the voice of my children, although they clearly have their own voices as well. How many of you eat eggs over Easy or Sunnyside Up? Does anyone here like their steak or their burgers a little bit on the rare side? How about a little sushi for dinner? Maybe a nice Caesar salad? Don't forget cookie dough ice cream for dessert. I'm sure you've all had your caffeine today, and maybe more than you should. Maybe a little bit of pop, coffee, maybe a little bit too much caffeine. Who's to decide what's too much caffeine? Everything you've consumed over the course of your life, it's against CDC guidelines, all those things that I talked about, against CDC recommendations. So why is it okay to attempt to force our children to follow said guidelines? Is it political? Are you trying to cover your own butts? I'd be more worried about a class action suit from a bunch of angry parents than following your "rules for thee, but not for me" guidelines. Now, I'm willing to bet that we're all law-abiding citizens in this room. We all care about the kids. So let's look at this from a legal standpoint, shall we? Our Illinois laws are based on the Illinois Constitution. Article 745, ILCS 70-5, Chapter 111, Paragraph 5305, Section 5, states discrimination, "It shall be unlawful for any person, public or private institution, or public official, to discriminate against any person in any matter, including, but not limited to, licensing, hiring, promotion, transfer, staff appointment, hospital managed care, entity, or any other privileges, because of such person's conscientious refusal to receive, obtain, accept, perform, assist, counsel, suggest, recommend, refer, or participate in any way, in any particular form, of health care services contrary to his or her conscience." Conscience is defined, "a sincerely held set of moral convictions arising from belief in and relation to God, or which, though not so derived, arises from a place in the life of its possessor parallel to that filled by God among adherents to religious faiths." Simplified, this that I just read is the Illinois Constitution Right of Conscience Act. If you don't believe me, you can look it up, or I will provide you guys with copies. So as I've mentioned, I have children in both 33C and 205. Many families have children in multiple districts. 33C is mask optional as of this point. It makes sense to force masks on kids in 205, but they're living with a bunch of kids that are free to roam about, spreading their nonexistent germs. Oh yeah, it's not political. So here's what I'm going to end the day with today. First, my young adult that is old enough to choose whether or not to vaccinate or not vaccinate will not be wearing a face diaper to school. If he's faced with disciplinary action, whether it be to send him home, or detention, or whatever else they come up with, just know that my lawyer is on retainer. Second, I'm probably not... I am probably not your biggest problem in this room. I'm probably one of about 100 or so in this meeting. So please understand, I prefer not to have to tell my son and all his peers that their school is trying to physically harm their future health. And third, for those of you that believe in God, please remember that when voting on whether to allow our kids freedom of choice, whatever your vote may be, you are the person that will ultimately be standing in front of your Creator. And lastly, if any of you are not prepared to stand up for the constitutional rights of our children, please, I'm begging you, resign before the vote. Because you're not capable of doing what we elected you to do. And please remember all these things when deciding what is right for our kids and for our families. And if you get pressure from Dr. McBride, just get those tactics out of your mind, because you guys hired him, and he works for you. You don't work for him. Okay? I'll hold the Right of Conscience Act for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a Mr. Theo Sheik.
Can you please bring your mask on, so I can hear you?
Theo Sheik.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Hello, my name is Theo Sheik. Hello, my name is Theo Sheik, and... No, I can't. No, I can't.
You don't have to yell. The microphones can be really sensitive, so you just go ahead and tell them.
I don't want to wear a mask, thank you.
Okay, so anyway, what Theo wanted to say was, he didn't want to wear a mask. He's gonna be coming to this high school eventually. His brothers and sisters all have gone here, or go here. He's worried about the oxygen depletion in the mask. He says he gets headaches, he gets dizzy sometimes. He said that breathing bad air makes you sick. He said, bullet point here, freedom of choice. He wants to be able to choose whether he, you know, should be able to wear a mask or not. If he feels like he's safer with a mask, he will wear a mask. He says that "God gave me freedom, and I follow God's laws," and that's all I have.
Next, we have a Mr. James Sheik.
I've been away for a while, but... Hello, board. So anyway, funny story. My kid thinks this is called a school board meeting because it's a meeting at a school, and everybody looks bored. But when I look around, I see people who are confused, and I think that's a good thing. Because if you're not confused, you're not paying attention. We can go over all the studies and data. We've been here before doing this. I'm sure you all know, but that would take too long anyway. I'm just gonna do a brief refresher. First, we were told not to wear a mask. It's ineffective. Then we were told everybody had to mask up, right? When asked why, that was obviously a lie, right? What did they say? Because they didn't want anybody, everybody to go run out and buy up all the N95s. So it was a noble lie. That doesn't really sound right to me, so I'm confused. Studies came out six months into the pandemic suggested kids were not significant spreaders, nor did the kids even get really sick from COVID, but we locked them out of school anyway. Right? That's confusing. Eighteen months into it, there's still not one case in the world, in the world, where a teacher has caught the virus from a kid, yet we see teachers, you know, holding up protesting protest signs saying, you know, "I can't teach if I'm dead," stuff like that. Still no evidence in the world, not one teacher, right? So it's not about the teachers getting sick, so I don't know what it's about, because, you know, we're confused. If you think about it, the safest place in the world is a classroom. So why do we want to mask our kids again? If the classroom was a tornado shelter and COVID was a tornado, we'd all be running into the classrooms. There's absolutely no evidence that masks reduce the transmission of this virus. In fact, there's no evidence that they don't, they stop the spread at all. We can go over many studies. Military studied 800 participants, social distance, 800 not social distance, 1,600 overall, no measurable difference to the two groups. Sample size was too small, they said. Okay, so another study. This includes thousands of people from May 2020 to January 2021. Found the same thing, no measurable difference. Masks, that's weird. So the placebo group and the mask group, there was no measurable difference between infection rates. That's another one. So Great Britain got hit with the Delta about a month before we did. They're already trending down now, so if this is any indication, we're right at the peak of it about now, and it should be trending down by the time school starts. By the way, it's five times less deadly than the original Alpha virus, so it's confusing that you're even considering to mask our kids again for something that's eight times less deadly than the flu. So I know what you're gonna say, you know, the director of the CDC said last week that more kids died from the COVID than the flu, except, yeah, that was a lie. According to the CDC's own numbers, right there on CDC.gov, you can see, you will find the numbers from the deaths of the flu. These are 18 and under kids, right? The flu was about 100, was three times higher, so it was 100 more. So the CDC numbers are 335, and the flu numbers for that same year were 420-something. So... Yeah, it doesn't make sense. So that's confusing. A survey was forwarded to the parents online. Did you guys all get your surveys? Did you guys fill them out? The multiple-choice questions were interesting. It was, do you want your kids to wear a mask, or do you only want your kids to wear a mask when vaccinated? There was no option for no masking period, right? So I'm sure those numbers will get manipulated somehow, but if you look at the comment section, about 1,260 comments, yes, my wife read them all, 80, over 80%, over 80% of the people surveyed that fill out the survey disagree with masking their kids at all. And there's no amount of Harvard word salad that you can produce that will change those numbers. I got them all on screenshot. Thirty seconds. Let me skip to the end. Okay. So I said before, if you're not confused, you're not paying attention. Well, I have a caveat to that. If you're not confused, it could mean that you already made up your mind one way or the other. Well, I'm not confused anymore. A mask is now a new political symbol, like wearing a red hat. Our kids are not here for your political statements. We know our kids. In short, you have no evidence, you have no proof, and you have no right to put face diapers on our kids. We are organized, we are many, and we are not confused anymore. We will not go down without a fight, and we will rage against the dying of the light.
All right, next, we have a Violet Selso.
Good evening, board, fellow parents. I want to state before I read this, you should know I did not write this. I am here, it's written by a collective group of current students that want their voices heard without backlash from students, and it's my privilege to be able to do that for them. Throughout these past two years, masking has drastically changed everybody's life in many different ways, but arguably, the ones most affected are us, the students. For us, it's been harder to learn, socialize, and concentrate. We haven't been able to personally connect with our teachers and build a student-teacher bond that is needed for active engagement in the classroom. Last year, classroom participation was dramatically low, especially for honors classes, where kids are always eager to participate. Teachers couldn't tell when there was confusion in the classroom due to the lack of facial expressions, which they heavily rely on to gauge whether or not the curriculum is being understood. Not only was learning more difficult, but socialization was much harder, too. In group projects, there was little to no collaboration. At lunchtime, students sat in silence as we ate prepackaged meals. We were unable to build much-needed social skills that we will need for the rest of our lives during this past school year. Even football games were boring, as students could only sit in the stands and watch. The school instituted contact tracing at these events, which also led to low attendance, as going to a football game was not worth the risk of missing out on two weeks of school, club meetings, and sports. Lastly, we couldn't concentrate on our work. The mask straps dug into the back of our ears, and any attempt to relieve the pressure was met with a stern scolding from staff members. This and similar factors, such as your eyes becoming dry and itchy, took our focus away from the teacher's instruction. Secondly, all of these consequences were unnecessary, as the masks have no place in the school system. We think everyone can agree that when we have known about this virus, has changed a lot since March. One of the very few things we have known is that this does not affect children and adolescents, yet you still force us to wear masks. This tells us two things. One, that teachers are more concerned about themselves than their students. And two, it tells us that you only see us as disease-carrying vessels rather than fellow human beings. Student athletes were required to wear masks while performing physically exhausting activities, including sports like soccer and track and field. Not only were they required to wear them during practice, but also during weightlifting, where controlling one's breath is necessary for safety and performance. The requirements of masks limit the amount of oxygen they receive, therefore decreasing their quality of life and damaging their health. In April and May of 2020, a study took place in Denmark. They had nearly 6,000 participants that completed that study. Half of them were instructed to wear a mask out... Half of them were instructed to wear a mask outside their home and were given a fifty surgical mask to wear. The other half were told not to wear a mask. Of those that wore a mask, forty-two members got infected with COVID, too, which is one point eight percent of them. The maskless group had fifty-three cases, or two point one percent. That is a point three difference. The scientists call this statistically insignificant. Overall, it's disappointing to note that all of these detriments done to our school environment were unnecessary and made in vanity. As an effect of the low success rates of masks, many students were forced to quarantine during the school year. This left them to learn on their own without teacher instruction. Because of this, cheating was exponentially higher than previous years and test scores plummeted, even for those typically with straight A's. Teachers would post material online and then blame you if you didn't understand it without their instruction. However, if you tested negative and wanted to come back to school, they wouldn't allow it. These high quarantine rates led to everybody moving to online learning. During online learning, nobody was engaged, including the teachers. The majority of teachers spent their days at home relaxing instead of teaching. This even went as far as teachers falling asleep while they were given a lesson from their car with their camera on for all students to see. Yes, you heard that correct. A teacher who appears to be asleep, wearing a puffy winter coat and a seatbelt. Are you sure these Wednesday classes were extremely beneficial to students? Not once, while making these huge decisions, did the school board stop to seriously consider what the students thought and needed. That is why we are writing this now. We were asked once to share our thoughts, then were immediately discarded and thrown away. The other time we were surveyed had nothing to do with our opinion, and instead asked for our sexuality and if we were members of the LGBTQAI+ community. You all hired and approved a survey that asked minors and collected information, I'm almost done, about their sexual preferences. If asked if BIPOC students were affected worse by the lockdowns and learning online, or in online learning. Here's my close. So those are concerns about the also scary Delta variant should relax. They might cite a study, um, cited by the CDC stating that vaccinated people can infect it, but the study is one that followed healthcare workers who received a vaccine that is not approved in the U.S. The study was rejected after peer review. This is why masking is unnecessary, especially among students, and in-person is crucial to providing quality education. So please, from the students, again, from the voice of these students that are current here, make masking optional and give parents and students their freedom of choice back. Thank you.
Next I have a Trisha Tabor.
Hi, everyone. Yep, it's me again. I'm speaking again today, and yes, I created the Facebook event for this meeting. I'm known as Trisha Lynn on Facebook, because I wanted you all to see how important it is to these parents and to be here to fight for our kids, because obviously you guys aren't. I mean, it's the truth. You're not. Masks, they've been debunked. They've, there's been multiple studies on them. They carry more bacteria than wearing them. The kids aren't even the super spreaders. I mean, seriously. I wanna go, uh, on a little personal route here. I'm not gonna go with statistics and numbers and stuff. December two thousand nineteen, I went to the hospital. Um, I previously had a heart attack in two thousand seventeen. I was only thirty-six years old. Thirty-eight, December two thousand nineteen, I was brought in. They did another angiogram, and I'm like, okay, I'll just get more stents put in, no big deal. Nope. Transferred to Christ Hospital. I had a triple bypass. I was in the hospital for eighteen days. I almost didn't make it. But you know what? That told me that I needed to start to live. Pandemic hit two months after. I was still recovering from my triple bypass. And two months after pandemic hit, yeah, I was a little nervous of the unknown, 'cause we didn't know everything that was going on. After doing some research, you know, I'm sorry, screw it. Mask off. I'm living. We cannot live in fear. I can tell from experience, I almost didn't make it. And I'm standing here today, not even forty years old, having a triple bypass, and I made it, and I will not put a mask back on my face. These students should not have to put a mask on their face. I will be willing to give up five days for seven, what, eight weeks? There's eight, seven, eight of you? I will follow you around for five days. I'll take the time out of my day, and I will make you wear a mask, like you are making these students wear masks. Not going out to your car to take them off and have a break, not going out to lunch, take, not going to your cushy offices and taking them off to have a break. And I'm sure there's other parents here, too, that will take each, one of you each, and we will follow you for five days. And we'll see how that goes, 'cause I'm sure you're not gonna like it. These kids don't have the choice to just take them off and you take breaks and whatever else. So you know what? Yeah, I, I think you really, I, I know you guys already made up your minds. I, I mean, we're, we're not dumb. We, we, I mean...
But most of them have.
Right, but, but we aren't gonna stop. There are tons of us that are going to fight, and we will continue to fight. Another personal story. I didn't wanna go there, but I'll go there. My daughter was in eighth grade. She was assaulted. She was strangled. She used to love to sing. She had a great voice. She tried choir freshman year, but due to strangulation, it ruined some of her vocal cords, so it messed up her voice a little. He also covered her mouth. Imagine what a mask does on my daughter. Takes her back to that day. Don't discriminate. Don't, don't separate vaccinated from unvaccinated. Let us parents choose. I will sign a waiver today, and I will take responsibility if my child gets sick, and I'm sure everybody in here will be willing to sign a waiver. And also, I have decided I will be running in twenty twenty-three for a seat on District Two Oh Five's Board of Education, because I will fight for the children. I will fight what's right for the children. When I was a, I was made a mother, that was my number one priority, was doing what was best for my children. So yeah, I will be running, and I will be sitting there on that side of the table, and I will be doing what's right for my child, for everybody's children, not just not my own. Also, we have a list, uh, if you haven't signed your name and your email address to join our group, to keep up to date on what's going on and further possible action, please see me. I will take your name and addresses. Thank you, have a great night.
All right, next we have a Cheryl Nopo.
Good evening. Myself and my husband are here representing, um, our son, who's a sophomore here at LT. You know, the right, recently, I've been to a lot of board meetings in our region, and as parents and community members come up to this microphone to speak, it's clear to me that many of us respect the work that you guys do, um, and have done and continue to try to do. So as frustrated some of the parents may be here, it is, does not go unrecognized what you've put in in this past fifteen, eighteen months. Um, I think it must be very difficult and very trying to stay motivated. You're putting in long hours of overtime to both create and implement the procedures over this past year and a half, which keep our children being educated, or keeping our children educated. In addition, the ISBE had, you headed down one path, right? And then bam, they take a hard left by mandating some new restriction, and then you guys, the administrators and board, have to then figure out new ways to continue to educate our children. That's exhausting, I am sure. This all seemed warranted one year ago, though. I think that was fair. And I, for one, applaud you and your diligence and tenacity in getting it done. However, time has passed, and we are much smarter now. We have learned so much from the virus and so much from the science. The science is everywhere, and it is showing that masks do not keep a person safe from the virus. I think you're probably exhausted by COVID and the thorn in the side it's become for us all. I know I am. But we're asking you to muster up the grit, to take a hard right, away from the politics of the CDC recommendations, away from the politics of the ISBE, away from the inaccuracy and the ma- of the masks, um, that really don't protect this deadly virus. In addition, it is the right of every American to choose if they want the vaccination or not. This right will not change. Historically, plenty of parents have not gotten their children vaccinated from viruses that have arisen. COVID is no different. As we choose to get a flu shot each year for ourselves and our children, we will now have to choose each year to get the COVID vaccine, vaccine or not. Some of us will, some of us won't. This is the American way, and it's not gonna change. When school begins in two weeks from today, I implore you, this room implores you, that you take a hard right away from this false and dishonest security that a cotton mask is gonna keep our children from getting sick, and recognize that this is the American way to vaccinate or not vaccinate. No mask should be required at Lockport Township High School. Also, just recently, I've learned of the word malfeasance. I had not heard that before, but it is a common term that seems to arise recently. Um, a lot in the, in the news and such. Malfeasance is the wrongdoing or misconduct, the wrongdoing or misconduct, especially by a public official. And I think that term comes to light at a very important time. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a Mr. James Brody.
Hello, Board. Hello, Parents. Um, I've put two kids through this high school, with my third and last child getting ready to start her freshman year. On July nineteenth, I attended my first board meeting here at this high school. And I gotta tell you, um, I was a little disappointed, mostly at, uh, Mr. McBride. His virtue sending to the rest of the board members. The way he tries to manipulate you guys into voting a certain way. Now, I'm not saying that you vote that way or not, but he should just state the facts. We don't need his personal opinion, okay? We just need to state the facts and let the board, because the board and all the members on the board, we voted you in to make the decisions that are right for this school district. I do not need, and the board does not need, any manipulation. I'm waiting to see you on a commercial for the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, because you spent about forty-five minutes, it felt like, talking about how great it was. I don't know about anybody else. I wanted to bang my head in the wall. All right, so it leads me to the manipulation of this recent survey, and bam, the first question. Layers of prevention. Please indicate one of the following issues below that is your greatest concern as the school reopens in August. Now, the questions and the answers are multiple choice. The first question is new variant of COVID-19. Mask-wearing at school. Increases in community spread. Cleaning and ventilation at the school. Or close contact tracing and lost school time due to quarantine procedure. Well, the problem is, these aren't straightforward answers regarding this question, because if I were to select mask-wearing at school, and this survey is up to the interpretation of whoever is developing it or actually is going to look at the results, you don't know if I'm for masks. You don't know if this person's against masks. You don't know if the group is for optional masks. It's up to people, freedom of choice. You just know, 'cause the last percentage I saw, that fifty-two percent of the people that took this survey are concerned about masks. Okay, but you don't know which way they're leaning, so it's up to a manipulation period again, and a manipulation decision. And my wife had a conversation with Mr. McBride, because I'm a little confused at the doctor title at this point. Um, and he said, well, my wife said, well, you know, if you look at the comments under the questions, it's overwhelming that the parents and the people and the taxpayers in this district do not want the kids to wear masks. But Mr. McBride told my wife, oh, I don't know what survey you're looking at, because fifty-two percent of the people are in favor of universal masks. Eh, no, they're not! No, they're not! Because, because this is manipulated into look at the answers however you see fit, because I can guarantee you what's gonna happen. Later on, when you guys talk about the survey, Mr. McBride's gonna be like, the community came together, and overwhelmingly, they want universal masks. I mean, everyone's concerned about everything. And he's gonna push that. He's gonna push that scenario, but it's false and it's wrong, because if you read the comments, a lot of comments, it is overwhelming that that is not what people want. So with that being said, you know, you guys are really pushing for mandatory, actually, Dr. McBride again, he kinda took the floor last time. He was pushing for stealth mandatory testing when kids came back, whether they were sick or not. Isn't it something how ten billion, ten billion dollars is coming to the States for COVID testing in schools as feds pushed the reopening, released on last Wednesday? Something like, uh, eight hundred and eighty-eight million dollars is going to the school districts in California. Two hundred and fifty-one million dollars in additional COVID relief money to the New York area and Chicago. Now, we're not talking about Lockport, we're talking about Chicago, is to receive an additional eighty-one million dollars in additional COVID relief for testing. My question is, the board is contracted, this is another survey question, the board is contracted with S.H.I.E.L.D. to offer the no-cost means, no cost for all students. There's a cost to everything. We pay for it. We pay for it in our taxes. We pay for it every, you know, you guys think the money's free. It's not free. Got thirty seconds. So what I'm trying to say is, I don't know why we're pushing to test healthy kids and why you're so strung on to this, or is it because everyone wants a piece, everyone wants a little bit of the piece of the pie? Like Rob Emanuel says, never let a good crisis go to waste, right? Stop with the nonsense. And if you can't do your job, and if you can't ask a straightforward question, like you told my wife, you're not a professional survey, uh, developer, if, you, my sir, my dear man, should be able to ask a straightforward question. Do you want a mask? Do you not want a mask? Yes or no? And if you can't do that, you should resign, 'cause you've been an educator for over thirty years. If I got ten seconds left, he can respond.
All right, it's Mr. Kyle Clare.
Hello, Board. I, I'm just, I just have like a straightforward que- do you look, just look at this room and then look at you guys. You see a difference between these two groups right now? Why do you all have masks on right now? Oh, is it because the board president told you all to wear masks right now? Is that why you're all wearing masks right now? Interesting. Um, look at this room. Again, look at how many people are in this room, and then there's another room over there filled with people. Where are your pro-mask protesters? I don't see them. They're not here. So I implore every single one of you to do is to take in account the community that gather here today, that took the times out of their day. These people probably have busy work today. It's a Monday. They were probably at work all day, and they decided to come here at seven o'clock because they care about what's going on. They probably haven't been here last year. They probably weren't here last year, but they're here this year, because this issue has galvanized a nation of people, and they are sick and tired. We are eighteen months into this pandemic, and we are still talking about masks in August of twenty twenty-one and putting them on children. You guys have one school in this district, you have one, you're in it right now. The only school has students fourteen through eighteen. If they want the vaccine, then they perfectly have the right to. It's twelve and up. And if they don't want it, they also have the right to, under the Nuremberg Code. So it makes no sense for all of you to force a choice or to not even, it's not a choice, you're forcing children to wear masks against their will. That is not how I want to live my life. Like this other woman said over there, I want to live. I don't wanna just survive. And what you're doing is taking the joy out of high school for all these children. I lost everything in this pandemic. I was supposed to be the lead role in my musical, and I did not get to have that, because a week before we were supposed to do it, my school had to shut down. I didn't have a senior year of high school. I didn't get that. I didn't get... I didn't get to sit in a classroom. No matter how much we all say we used to hate it, you know what, that's not true. Because I hated sitting at home a lot more. And I hated coming to school every day, having to wear that stupid mask on my face, sitting at desk away from other students for only 30 minutes a day, getting absolutely nothing done. I was supposed to take six AP tests this year. I only felt confident enough to take two, because the educational standards this year in this state were abysmal. They were abysmal. Our students were not prepared. They weren't. It is well beyond time we get back to normal. This is not normal, the way you're all sitting. This is not normal. This community wants normal. This community does not want to come to school to have their children for eight hours a day, or if they stay after school and do clubs. A lot of kids do that, too. What will that take them? Eight hours a day, even later if they do sports? Sitting in a mask all day? That is not comfortable for anyone. And none of you do it. None of you do it. I'm 100% sure of that. I'm sure all of you have walked into a store before that I'm not asked on. I'm sure you've seen your friends, seen your family without a mask on. I'm sure all of you have done that. And all the other kids are doing that, too. Even the kids who pretend to care about masks are doing that, too. I know. I know them. Trust me. Nobody in here is actually wearing a mask other than to virtue signal in front of a public setting, okay? And this is the school board. And how many of you are voting? How many of you voted this last election? Did any of you vote? Well, did you all have a choice on who to put on your school board? As I recall, there's only four people on the ballot, and there's only four spots open. So it seems like a lot of you aren't here by default. So maybe you should think about that when it comes to the next election. What happens, because you see this community outreach. There's no pro-mask protesters out here. I don't see them. Nobody in this audience is wearing a mask right now. The only people are you. So just take that into consideration when you take your vote. And do not feel pressured by anybody. You are your own individual. Vote however you want. And if you want to vote against the will of the parents, then you will see what will happen. Because it's not going to be good. Because this community is a conservative community. This community is a conservative that values choice. This is a community that values God and that values free will. And that's it. And they will not have that free will given to them by God taken away from them. Period. And they're going to make decisions for their children, whether you like it or not. And that is, honestly, I don't know why you're all so hell-bent on forcing people to do things. Like, why do you care whether someone else's kid wears a mask or not? Why is that any of your business? You're a school board, okay? You're supposed to represent the parents. You're not the teachers' union board, and you're not Governor Pritzker's board. So please, think about that when you vote. 30 seconds, okay? I'll close with this. Please, 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 take into consideration that these people that you probably don't usually see, that they are here. And they are willing to come here every time until they see that the school board is doing the right things. If you have all crowded people in this room, that means you're not doing the best for their children. That means they care, that they're going to be here. So please, take that into consideration when making your vote today. Thank you.
All right, Patricia Colella.
Hello. There's no difference between a man that cannot read and a man who doesn't read. This book I have here, 100 Million Guinea Pigs, published in 1933. 100 million Americans act as unwitting test animals in a gigantic experiment with poisons conducted by the food, drug, and cosmetic manufacturers. In the magazines and newspapers, a terrific verbal barrage laid down on the American people. First, to set in motion a host of fears about their health. Second, to persuade them that by taking their products, they can postpone the onset of disease. 1933. It is worse now, because the agencies that were created to protect us from them are now in bed with them. The employment there is like a revolving door, where employees work for the industry and then turn around and work for our government agencies. There is information that you do not have. How do you know what is being censored if you didn't know the truth to begin with? What I have here is Miller's Review of Critical Vaccine Studies, published in 2016. There's over 400 studies here. This one is from the British Medical Journal, 2005. The CDC collaborates with vaccine manufacturers to increase uptake by intentionally using scare tactics and inflated influenza death figures. The CDC works on behalf of manufacturers by conducting well-coordinated scare campaigns to increase influenza vaccination. The CDC publicly asserts that influenza kills 36,000 Americans annually. However, the National Center for Health Statistics, operated by the CDC, shows an average of just 1,348 influenza deaths per year. The CDC, this one is British Medical Journal, 2015. The CDC receives money from the pharmaceutical industry that influences decisions it makes about the public welfare. In 1992, Congress passed legislation that created the nonprofit CDC Foundation to encourage relationships between the CDC and industry. Pharmaceutical companies donate to the CDC Foundation. The CDC's high credibility among physicians would be threatened if they learned that it takes money from pharmaceutical companies. This one was the Plus One Journal, 2009. Mice that were infected with a seasonal influenza virus survived exposure to a lethal influenza strain. Vaccinated mice died. Prior vaccination against seasonal influenza may increase the risk of contracting a severe case of pandemic influenza. This is National Academy of Science, 2014. Baboons vaccinated against pertussis became carriers and spread the disease. 24 hours after the vaccinated baboons were exposed to pertussis and placed in cages, unvaccinated baboons were added to each cage. The vaccinated baboons infected them with the disease. Different what they're telling you on TV, huh? Hurt immunity, let's see. This one is October 12th, World Journal Viral. Hurt immunity may never be achieved because high vaccination rates encourage the evolution of more severe disease-causing organisms. Makes sense. It's like they do with the antibiotics. It's making it worse. Population-wide vaccine-derived immunity promotes the evolution of novel and more virulent pathogen strains. This one, Vaccine 2008. Pathogens evolve to become more virulent in immune populations, diminishing the benefits of vaccination. Pathogens may become more virulent in an abnormal host environment, which can occur following a population-wide vaccination program. This is the misinformation, I say that sarcastically, that they don't want you to have. There is a plethora of literature, research, and documentaries to look, though, none of which can be had with a simple Google search. As you study the literature, the information that you will find is so profound and damning to these companies, then you have to wonder, why isn't it on the news? Which is when you realize who they are. This is not about politics, yet they have sold it that way. The only way they make money is by keeping you sick. Sounds insidious. All right. The only way they make money is by keeping you sick. It sounds insidious, because it is. We must not follow authority blindly. There's no such thing as hesitancy when you have knowledge. And finally, if a law is unjust, a man is not only right to disobey it, he's obligated to do so. Thomas Jefferson.
All right, Mr. John M. Pace.
Good evening. I didn't come here with any prepared statements. Didn't come to bore anybody with a bunch of statistics. Everybody's got their own. What I came here to tell you about is my daughter. And when she found out, when we took the online survey, she went through every single response. And she was feeling pretty good about herself. And then the news came through that you've decided to force them to wear masks in school. And she cried. Now, I served in the United States Marine Corps, and I brought my kids up, three of whom have already graduated from this school, that they should respect legitimate authority, that the people that we vote into office are looking out for them, that they listen to the people. Didn't happen. She went through, like I say, she went through every response, and she was feeling pretty good. You know, I see all these parents here, and we've heard a lot of statistics. These people are all educated. They're up on it. They've been following the science. Every group that is supposed to look out for us, the groups that I swore an oath to, the United States Government, the, all the agencies, the media, they've prostituted themselves against us. They're lying. You people are the school board. You say that you're here to teach our kids a lesson, to educate them. I want you to know that that's exactly what you're doing with this mask mandate. But you're not teaching them the lesson you want them to learn. You're teaching them that you do not care about what these people that pay the taxes, that vote, that work, what they do, doesn't matter. Like I say, you've all got your statistics. We've got ours. You've chosen yours to hide behind, just like the scientists at Tuskegee, just like the National Socialists. They all had their science, their statistics. These people are all here because they care about their kids, their mental health. There's been more kids dying of suicide and despair. These kids are at their wits' end. They have the end of a rope and nothing else. You have the ability to give these kids something that has been taken away from them. And it looks like you're going to refuse to do it, for whatever reason. You're teaching them to disrespect everything that all these parents have brought their kids up to respect. The rule of law, the rule of democracy, that we can vote the way that we want to. That's the lesson that you're teaching them. That is what you've taught them. That what they want doesn't matter. That you will do what you want, and you will hide behind some experts' skirt tails, the governor, somebody like that. You won't do what's right for them. You won't do what their parents want. All these people here, all the people in the other room, they all love their kids. And every one of them says they want their kids to go to school, to be with the teachers, and to not be masked. You've got a young man here who had his entire senior year taken from him because of this. My daughter's a junior. I want her in school. That is where all these parents want their kids. And you are going to take that away from them, because some of these parents, a lot of them, are going to take their children's education into their own hands. They're not going to give them to you anymore. They're not yours. They're theirs. You people are cowards if you do what you're going, what it looks like you're going to do. Cowards. Hiding behind lies. It's disgusting.
All right, Michael D. Ainge.
Neighbors, Board? I'm a Vietnam vet. I just listened to a Marine there. I have the same feeling inside what he was saying right there. Cowards. Do you know I was drafted? How many people here were drafted by the government? Hmm, nobody. My number was 39. 39, I'll never forget that number. So why don't you go out and tell these parents here you're going to draft their kids? You're going to make them wear masks. Every one of you up there, every single one of you got to make a decision, just like the government made on me, the federal government made on me, to take my life and bring it overseas to lose to communism. To lose. And you'll lose this battle with these parents. These parents have every right, every right. Just look at them. Every right to raise their kids the way they want to. Not you. Because I know what the government is. The federal government is nothing but bureaucrats that are looking for money. Just like Fauci. One minute, wear a mask. Next minute, don't. He doesn't know what he's doing. They should fire, if I had him as a doctor, I would fire him immediately and find another doctor. Immediately. These kids deserve an education. An education where if they're learning math, they learn math, math. Not a teacher up there saying, take down that mask. You can't have that mask. Don't come to school tomorrow. That is not your decision. That's the decision of we, the people, not you, the bureaucrats. Never let that happen. When a teacher tells a child to take his mask and put it back over his nose, I want a camera on that teacher a camera on that teacher like we have on the police force right now. I want to see what's going on in these classrooms. I pay my taxes. I'm a grandpa. I got five grandkids. You know what I miss the most out of them? A smile. A pure smile from a kid going off the bus that had these masks on, running around. What did we do to these kids? What did they do to the Vietnam vet? Spit on me, baby killer, and I tried to get rid of communism, but no, communism is in these schools. I'll guarantee you, Marxism is in these schools. I'll guarantee you, and we got to stop it. Because all, if you want the government to run your life like they ran mine with a number, number thirty-nine, I'll never forget that number, and I want you as a board to think, if you're going to vote, you're, and you vote against these parents, you're drafting these kids. Just think about it. Well, I'm not going to, there's no decision with these, if a person wants to put a mask on, put a mask on. If he doesn't, he doesn't, but it's not up to the teacher to tell him to put that, uh, mask ba- uh, back on or not. She's supposed to teach science, math, art, writing, whatever it is. This is disgusting what's going on in this America of mine, because I love it. And I could have been sitting at home, like the one person said, and minding my own business or moving down to Florida, but I liked Illinois and I says, "I'm in here for the fight, I'm not leaving." I am not leaving. Because these bureaucrats are nuts. I'm telling you right now, they're, they're off the wall. They know how to throw money around, but they don't know how to look at people and say, "Just let them, just let them raise their kids. Let them be in peace." And I, every time I look at a mask, I think of Communist China, where this started from. And the kids should know that. If they would have nipped it in the bud over there, nobody would have been wearing masks. Nobody. But why did they come over here on planes? Why did they, why did they shut down their own, their own nation? No problem. Thank you for letting me talk. But this is an outrage. Let our kids be kids. It's like the one, and I listened to Kyle a few times, I'd give this kid a lot of respect. This kid has got more guts than any of you up there because you're afraid to do the right decision. Just don't draft our kids. Let our kids be kids. Let them play football, baseball. I, I used to come to the board meetings before thirty, I mean, what, twenty years ago when my kids were here? I knew Hall, I knew the baseball coach, football coaches, I knew them all. We never had this problem. Let the kids be, and if you had a problem, call me up, I'll take care of my kid. And I made sure he was taken care of, not the teacher. Put cameras on him if they're going to do this. Thank you very much. God bless you and God bless America.
Mr. Steve Balich?
Could you get off her phone? She's on the phone the whole time, it's really annoying.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, you know what? I mean, it's rude. If you're talking, you want us to look at you, right?
Well, I'd appreciate it, but I'm certainly not going to call any of you out. You're on your phone and I'm speaking.
Well, yeah, because you know what? You're a coward, like everybody else said, and here you go again. And I, and we teach our kids to look at people when they're talking. So now if he's talking to you and you're sitting and writing love letters to people, I don't care about what you're writing.
You know what I'm talking about? And with your permission, I don't think anyone in this room should call anyone out. And what I mean by that is, you'll hear me when I do my presentation of, of name-calling and shouting.
No name-calling.
Not name-calling.
I think calling people a coward or writing love letters or pointing at them. So it, so.
Sorry if the truth hurts.
So with, so with all due respect, when I give my presentation.
So you're saying you want to be treated like an adult? That's what we're asking.
What I, what I would appreciate, sir, is not being interrupted. That's what I would appreciate.
Oh, you're in your presentation.
But what I would say to you is, I will tell you when I present, I'm, I'm not going to call any of your behaviors out, unless they're inappropriate, they affect other people. But if you're on your cellphone, or if you shout at me, or if you boo at me, or you cheer for me, with all due respect, you won't have any of our board members, me, any of my administrators call you, call you by name. So with all due respect, I, I hear what you're saying.
You answered us.
You answered us.
You're talking to us.
You've got that to speak.
I, I'm not here to have an argument with you and I'm, with all due respect, that's what I'm asking. Can you, we're going to move on with public comment and that's, that's all I have to say.
But what time can we have them removed?
One second, right?
When can we have any of them removed if they want them removed?
I know I'm going to ask you a question, you don't answer it, but just think about it. You ever eat cookie dough ice cream? You like it? You like cookie dough ice cream or licking the batter of a cake? Probably do, some of you, when you were a kid especially, you did that, right? Well, CDC says that's not recommended. It can hurt you real bad, you could get real sick, so they don't recommend it. So they're telling you no cookie dough ice cream. It's the same with the damn mask. Just think about it. It's a recommendation, it is not a law. They recommend no cookie dough and not licking batter, they also recommend no mask. Same thing. You don't need them. Now, the, it really upsets me when I think about what these kids are going through, because I have to wear, when I used to go to the store, I'd wear it and I'd take it off, someone would come and tell me, put it on, I'd tell them I ain't going to buy nothing, I'm leaving. That's not the way we're supposed to live in America. We're not supposed to live in fear or live under a tyrant or anybody telling us what we have to do. We're supposed to be able to be free and this is still America. The socialists have not taken it over. And I know they're trying like hell. Look around you. They're taking down your statues, they're talk, everything is Marxist orientated and you get socialism from the president all the way down to the school boards. I'm on the county board and we have socialists there. I never thought in my life I'd be seeing this kind of stuff in my America. I can't believe it. I don't want to live in fear and I don't live in fear. I really don't care anymore. I'm the chair of the Homer Township Republicans and we have four hundred and twenty-three people as of today in our group and I got more people from this crowd. We're growing and the whole thing is one thing, fix where we live. And this is part of fixing where we live. I got people telling me to shut up and not go do that. The Republican Party should stay out of it. I should stay out of it. And the answer to that is, no. It's my duty. When I die and I go up to heaven and God says, "What, you were a coward?" You go to hell. I am not going there, guys. I'm going to be fighting until I'm dead. I'm not going to allow anybody to be imposing rules based on a recommendation. Come on! A recommendation by the CDC that says you can't eat cookie dough? I mean, it's kind of absurd, right? Just think about it. We got to fix where we live. You guys all live in this area, we got to fix the grade schools, we got to fix the high schools. There's only one though, right here. So we got to fix this school and that means no mandates. Optional masks, so if a person wants to wear it, God bless them, that's their business. Let the parents decide. The parents don't own nobody, but they have to take care of their children and raise their children and they don't need a school saying, "Wear a mask" when it's bad for the kids. So it's not your business, it's your parents' business. So I'm just telling you, you don't have to be voting for the stupid mask. You really need to be looking at it and saying, "It's only a recommendation by a dumb organization called the CDC." Well, well, it's corrupt like they're saying, yes, corrupt as it could be, but they don't even get nothing right. Cookie dough, everybody eats. Come on! And it's a recommendation. This is a mask recommendation. Nobody uses that term. Everybody forgets, they think it's a rule or law or whatever, it's nothing. You don't have to do what somebody recommends. So please, think about it and think about what's going to happen when you croak and you go upstairs and you, the first thing God says to you, "What did you do to the kids?" And you say, "Well, I was just scared they're going to get a disease." And then guess what happens? You're not supposed to be afraid of anything. You know how their song goes, "Be Not Afraid"?
Be Not Afraid.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I, I have a couple of things on my phone, but I just would rather talk candidly as a mother and a parent and, um, I try to be a champion for my kids, uh, no matter what. And I think that that shows you through the good and the bad and sometimes through really bad, you're resilient. And what I've experienced, my daughter graduated from this high school twenty-twenty, um, that was a lot of scary stuff for about eighteen months and I applaud all of you sitting here that were involved in that. It was scary. I've never been, I live in Homer, I am, I'm, I've never been afraid. I was afraid for the world. I was praying at a park and crying with two of my friends for the world. So I applaud you for getting us through the last eighteen months, but we're eighteen months and someone else said that too. We need to be heroes for these children. We need to show them it's gonna be okay and you are the leadership in their room to take that to the next step regardless of whatever neighboring school district is doing. And believe me, most of my friends are teachers. I love them and respect them, but you are making this vote to make this a great school year and if you vote no masks, you are going to have these kids running in, applauding you. And my son, who said, "Mom, why are you going to that meeting tonight? It's not going to do anything." And I said, "You know what? I'm going." I was supposed to be out of town tonight on an airplane going to a different state to make money, to feed my family, but I'm here with you tonight, almost begging you, I'm shaking because I'm so passionate. They need to go to school. They love their teachers, they love their friends. Guess what? They need to know how to navigate this world. If somebody picks on them, they need to pick themselves up and not cry wolf that they are, they're bullied and they can't look people in the eye anymore. If we have masks on us, how can we communicate effectively? My son thinks he has three different things wrong with him now because he, he tunes out when someone's speaking at him with a mask. The mental health and wellness relies on your shoulders. I'm so passionate about this and I'm going to look each one of you in the eye. Do the right thing. Don't follow as a group. Dig deep down and go with what your spirit is telling you. You will have the happiest class returning. Twenty-twenty-one will cause a revolution that you, you, they'll probably all behave for you, you know? So think about that. If you champion that and you choose, I choose this, I'm going to do the right thing, not just go with the mainstream. The vets, these people, we need to show these kids, this is America and we live, and we live and die for freedom. You are at the pivotal precipice of how this is going to go this year. If they all walk in the first day with masks on, I don't even, I don't even know. I, I, I worry about everybody's children and I have two children and I would, I would die for them, but I can't vote, okay? Every vote counts regardless of what your leadership is encouraging the stats say. I don't know if every one of you have children, but you got to dig deep and do the right thing and thank you very much for your time.
Good evening to everyone that's here. First of all, I've never, ever been to a board meeting. I've never experienced this, so I apologize for going around taking pictures because I don't know the faces with the names when I get the emails and so forth and so on. But you are elected by the people in this community and like the young man said, when we go to vote and there's only four positions open and only four people show up as the incumbents, we don't have a choice. So you are sitting here representing us and our families and we rely on you to do the right thing, okay? That is so important. You are not just a teacher, an administrator, faculty, whatever, a coach. You are our voices. You are advocates for our children. So that being said, I felt a very strong need to come and be part of this because so much has happened over the last two years, so much craziness. It's COVID Simon says that we are playing. I mean, everyone should have woke up when they said you had to have an anal swab. All right? What is going on? And then Fauci says, "Wear two masks, no, three masks." No, wait, early on, he said masks, we didn't need masks. In fact, right here on the National Institute of Health website, with an article dated Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and eight, bacterial pneumonia caused most of the deaths in the nineteen, nineteen-eighteen Spanish flu pandemic. Meaning, the people that were told to cover their mouths were breathing in their own CO2 and causing their lungs to be infected. People were dying of pneumonia, not of the Spanish flu. And Dr. Fauci wrote the freaking paper back and it was exposed in two thousand and eight. So obviously, Dr. Fauci has become compromised over the years. Big Pharma has gotten out of control and they are controlling the narrative. They are controlling our politicians and that, um, this agenda has been going on for a very long time. And we should have seen it when the pandemic first came out with all the compromised deaths. People weren't even being tested and they were getting letters in the mail saying they tested positive and they're like, "I didn't even go get a test." People were dying in the hospitals of heart attacks and they were putting them down as COVID deaths because they got money from Big Pharma for amping up the fear, amping up the deaths and all that Big Pharma money has been trickling down into the state and local communities. Now, I have a question for you, Dr. McBride, because my son's on the football team. And the football team last season was in the spring and they were masked, except when they were out on the field. They were masked during weight training, they were masked out on the field during practice and you know what? That is so unhealthy. That is wrong on so many levels, just as one human being to another, there is no common sense for that whatsoever. But they can take the mask off when they're going out and playing against another team. The flip-flopping and the inconsistencies does not make sense. So first of all, the statistics have been manipulated from the get-go. The only cure was hydroxychloroquine, which was a sixty-year proven med for influenza and it was banned immediately when the pandemic started. When has a drug ever been banned in the history of anything? People should have been, had the freedom to go and buy something to protect themselves, but it was banned. Hospital administrators were getting kickbacks for how many COVID deaths they were, were reporting and there was lying. First of all, the vax is not FDA-approved. Uh, we all know that the WHO and the CDC are corrupt arms of Big Pharma. This is very important because Pfizer is making a killing. Everyone should know this because the Big Pharma money is trickling down to our community levels and I want to know, Dr. McBride, how you came across, how you decided to do this shield testing out of the blue and then I found out you're getting ten dollars per test? That is, that is incomprehensible and unconscionable. So in, in the second quarter in two thousand and twenty-one alone, Pfizer made eighteen point nine eight billion against, for this pandemic. But the people that are getting vaccinated, all the deaths and the maiming has been silenced. We don't even know true numbers, but people are saying blood clot, blood clots and cardiomyopathy has risen and you know what? Pfizer has two drugs that are skyrocketing to cure cardiomyopathy and blood clots.
Yes, we have a Jennifer Ponsolino.
I'd like to first thank everyone that came here to speak tonight. It takes a lot of courage and everybody had to take the time out of their day. I would like to speak on behalf of some of our families living here in our community, whether they have children or not. I am a public official, just like all of you, and I'm here to speak to you regarding your duty. There are people on this school board, unfortunately, that do not believe that some of the people speaking here tonight should be allowed to disagree with or challenge the school board. I would like to point out why that attitude is incorrect. Everyone in this room is a taxpayer. Therefore, it is their inalienable right to have an opinion and share it. They have every right to hold their elected officials accountable and question them. When it comes to the well-being, being of our children, it's a moral imperative to such. When, in the United States, our government grants us all certain rights as citizens. The Constitution guarantees that our rights are preserved and protected. Therefore, under the United States Constitution, we all are allowed to have the right of freedom of speech and expression. This right is covered under the First Amendment and we as citizens can voice our opinion and express ourselves freely. It also prohibits the abridging or preventing freedom of speech or the right to assemble peaceably. What is not protected under our freedom of speech is the following, obscenity, child pornography and fighting words.
What is not protected under our freedom of speech is the following: obscenity, child pornography, and fighting words. I bring up these specific definitions because it is apparent that some people need to be reminded why others, whether they like it or not, are within their constitutional right to speak here before the board. I'd like to remind the board exactly why you exist. You do not exist to give opinions, ignore opinions, or strictly adhere to the guidelines of the State of the Illinois Board of Education. I'd like to also define what a school board member is. You are each an elected official. An elected official is any person that is elected at a general or special election to any public office or appointed as such to fill a vacancy. In order to be effective, elected officials must work as part of a team to establish a shared vision for the future, develop goals and plans that make that future possible. And they are to work with their colleagues and their constituents, the voters, to enact the local policies and laws that will ultimately lead to successfully achieving those goals. If you look up the definition of what exactly a school board member is, you'll find this. School board members are locally elected public officials who are entrusted with governing a community's public school board. The role of the school board is to ensure that the school districts are responsive to the values, the beliefs, and the priorities of their communities. Not the state of Illinois, not the CDC, and not the teachers' unions. With all of these facts being stated, I would recommend that every elected school board member on this board listen to what each speaker has to say. Each speaker deserves the respect to to speak to you and to be heard. You are elected officials. The same elected officials who made decisions last year that made a lasting and physical and mental impact on all of these children's lives. You personally voted to increase property taxes last year. A year in which people's lives were financially impacted and who already pay your district seventy to seventy-four percent of their property taxes. This is why those who do not have children that attend your school still just have as much right to speak out about it, about how their tax dollars are being spent. Children's lives and their mental well-being are in your hands, your personal hands. These are decisions that cannot be taken lightly. The opinions and feelings of these speakers should not be taken lightly. They are speaking loud and clear. I should not have to remind the board that any parent who speaks to them regarding the upcoming school year, mask mandates, and curriculum have every right to do so. According to the state and federal laws, parents or legal guardians have the authority and the responsibility to execute all caretaking functions for their children. The authority of a parent or legal guardian guardian is defined as the entitlement to the custody of their children. They are free to make all decisions relating to the welfare of their child as they see fit, short of violating laws that protect children from abuse and neglect. Courts are not permitted to interfere with reasonable directives set forth by parents to discipline their children. I would also like to point out that under parental authority, parents have these rights and responsibilities towards their children. Custody, supervision, physical and psychological protection, health and safety. Edu- education, providing food, care for them. Parental authority gives parents the right to make all decisions necessary to their children's well-being. Parents and taxpayers have every right to stand here and speak and hold all of you accountable. Please take the time to listen to each and every single one of them, along with every phone call and every email. This is why you were elected. Thank you.
All right, there's Renee Gwynstew. I'm sorry.
I used to be able to sing that a lot better. I used to actually be the national anthem girl of Chicago. I sang for the governor, for mayor daily. Can't do it anymore after the last year and a half of my life because I pulled my kids from school last year to homeschool them because I refused to allow them to be masked, to have to go through the ups and downs and the not knowing. Kids thrive on schedule. Kids thrive on knowing what to expect. And they are completely not knowing what they should expect. They entrust all of us, you included, in doing what's right for them. They're looking to us as somebody said before, it's our responsibility, we teach them these lessons, and what lessons are we teaching them? I'm going to start. This is what I was going to start with. I actually came here completely not planning on speaking, but felt that I needed to. My mom is an almost thirty-year public school teacher, a veteran. This year was the hardest year in almost thirty years of teaching. Preparing, creating new materials, trying to teach on Zoom, speaking to parents for hours, trying to get them to do what they should be doing. Teaching their kids, helping their kids navigate what the teachers can't do. I know how hard your job is. I saw my mom go to school for her master's degree. I've been in her classroom. I I know how much you guys care about your students. I know that. I don't know which of you are teachers. I'm actually new to the area. But I'm not new to advocating for my children. I have been involved in advocating with legislation in Illinois for over ten years for parental choice, for religious exemptions. It's very important to me. You do not have the authority to mandate masks. Everybody is asking for your permission to do the right thing. A legislative body has to pass laws to mandate masks. There is a reason they haven't done it for a year and a half. They know that they can't based on the current legislation, as they said, seven forty-five ILCS seventy slash one, section seven-two, I can keep going, which paragraph? You don't have the authority. But the burden, the onus should not be on our children. It should not be on our children to come in without a mask, to have to fight their teachers who they should have good relationships with. When I start the school year, when I go to open house, I tell the teacher, you need a coffee? You call me up, I'll bring it. You forget your lunch at home, I will come and bring it to you because I know how hard your job is. And I want to be your friend, I want to be your advocate. If my kid is being a jerk in your class, you let me know, I'm going to take care of it. That should not be your job. Your job is to teach my kid. But we have to make the right choices for our children as parents. I have to protect my child. My my oldest son is disabled. He is high functioning on the spectrum. His hardest challenge is social interaction. I am myself hard of hearing. It is very difficult for me to understand people with masks on. I stare at people's lips when they're talking, especially when I'm in a loud space. It's very hard for me to understand. We homeschooled because I knew that it would be very difficult. We were living in a two-bedroom condo in Justice. We just moved here. We have the space now. I have no problem pulling my kids again this year if that's going to be the situation because I have to do what's best for them. And what's best for them right now, I see, is socializing. They need to be around other kids. They have to be around other adults that are teaching them new lessons. It takes a village to raise a child. The village has elected you to help us do that. I want to send my child to school, my children, I have four of them. I want to send them so they can be around their peers and I'm entrusting them to you. But you do not have the authority and I do not want to put that onus on my child. We talk about liability and I've seen that a lot of board meetings. The liability, the attorneys say we have liability. What about the liability for my child being bullied? For not wearing that mask because it's his right. The state of Illinois gives him that right, does not give you the authority to make him wear a mask. I understand that you're afraid for yourselves. But honestly, rhetorical question, don't answer it. You're not wearing the masks all the time. I know you're not. Nobody is. Ninety percent of everywhere you go, at least, at the very least, is not wearing masks. Losing my train of thought because like I said, I wasn't prepared to come here. So with social difficulty, disabilities, bullying, that's going to happen for those kids that want to fight the fight. Because we're American, we're the land of the free, the home of the brave. Don't do that to those kids. Don't make them bullied because my kid won't come with a mask. If my kid's bullied, somebody said their attorney's on retainer. I worked for an attorney for twenty years in contractual law. I have no problem filing motions in chancery court to make sure that what is done is right for our kids. Do what I know is in your heart. You are good people. You would not have gone into education if you did not care about kids because I know how damn hard it is. I hear about it for those hours afterwards from my mom. She goes to people's houses to try to get the parents involved. And this year has been abysmal. Kids that just don't show up and there's nothing she can do. Let's not do this again this year. Let's work as a team. Let's do the right thing for our kids. It shouldn't be on them, it should be on us, the adults. Let's show them how to be the land of the free and the home of the brave. Have a good night.
Next, we have a Michelle Valahovik. Hope I pronounced that right.
So my name is Michelle Valahovik. I have children in the district and I am a high school science teacher. I am not an anti-vaxer. I got it. My reasons, my body, my choice. Not a Democrat, not a Republican. What I am is a believer in freedom of choice for bodily autonomy. Data. The first page. Your child, all of our children, have a higher chance of drowning, dying from cancer, motor vehicle deaths, or being pulled into sex trafficking. CDC data. Next. The CDC now has a new or in our guidelines. We used to base everything on positivity rate. Remember, we were trying to get it below eight percent? Now, second page in your packet, we now have a new or. Not only is it positivity rate, but it is also the number of cases per one hundred thousand. Third page of data in your packet is the cases for Will County. On the bottom, you will see our mask mandate that we've had. Out of these sixteen months of data, Will County would have been in the green for thirteen of those sixteen months, according to the CDC's old positivity rate standards, which is in that next graph. Okay? The new, now that they've added an or on the data, now Will County would have, is only in the green for two months of those thirteen. So once again, let's move and let's add an extra guideline on there, okay? How many of you are actually pulling data and looking at it? You should have all been taught how to analyze graphs and data and look at biases, right? If you look at the guideline that just made them say that all of us who are vaccinated need to put on a mask, it was based on a study of five hundred cases. That is an extremely minuscule dataset when there are fifty to a hundred thousand new cases per day. How can you even use that as a dataset to base a conclusion that you're you're putting out and saying the entire country needs to put their masks back on? Too small of a dataset. It's a huge thing that I teach when we're analyzing data in my science classroom. The government agencies are supposed to be doing things in our best health interests. I'm sure that's what they said when they handed mothers who had morning sickness thalidomide. Sure, that's what they said when they sprayed our children with DDT in the nineteen sixties, too. Did you know that the EPA has changed the guidelines for our drinking water when many wells did not meet the necessary standards? But yeah, they're doing all this in our best interest. Yeah, your drinking water is not as safe as it used to be. We just changed the standards. Watch a few episodes on How to Become a Tyrant on Netflix. Learn some history about government and politics. Might scare you a little. Look at the control, the money, creation of fear, creation of division, and censorship. Next, in your packet of data, I have the data from my school district. Where testing costs over eight hundred thousand dollars funded by federal money, just like S.H.I.E.L.D. is. That's our money. Okay? The data comes out on the bottom. Eighty-two thousand tests. At about ten dollars per test, over eight hundred thousand dollars. We had a total during all of the months from January through June of a hundred and forty-three tests. That comes out to costing the taxpayer over five thousand dollars per positive test. So if we look at the S.H.I.E.L.D. data, which is on that next page, two hundred, two million tests with a positivity rate of point three one percent. Do you think you would approve a new math curriculum for eight hundred thousand dollars if it showed an increase in our math scores of point three one percent? Let's also add that these S.H.I.E.L.D. tests are not going to add to our negative tests of our positivity rate of our state. And so what that means is now, you know, I had a little cough last week. My son and I, we went and got tested. Why? I just wanted to make sure. No big deal. But now, we're testing all the kids in the high school. Guess what? Our CDC's new standards, even if we get those case rates down, our positivity rate's going to skyrocket. Because they've put two things on there now for us to try to meet. If you think our children have adjusted well to wearing a mask, two words: submissive, capitulation. It's the most common and recognizable outcome of trauma and abuse. Do a little bit of research on facial expressions and development. Bipolar disorder, anxiety, psychopathic tendencies. Who's going to pay for those in the future? Now you're going to take away. I can, I I can't even count the number of personal conversations I had with students this past year about their depression. I have never had to prepare so many lessons for students hospitalized, not because of COVID, because of their depression and attempts in suicide. Sixty-plus adolescent deaths from suicide this past year in Illinois. I knew zero COVID deaths. People say I'm lucky. You want to know how many suicides I knew this year? Two. Vote no. These children need more from us as educators and as board. I cannot teach not seeing their faces and they need to see mine. Please, vote no on this plan. Thank you.
Superintendent update? Those are all the public comments.
No, we have one that I took the place, it was yield to me. My name is Jack Lombardi. I'm a father of two children and I come to you in the capacity of a father and
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Who you signed it for?
What was the young lady's name? Does she yield contact? She has a white and black dress.
Karen who? For this. I'm sorry, somehow or another, they got just good. But I have to go based on the order that they are. So I have a Mr. Ryan Johnson.
So this is my third time speaking in less than two months. So I'll start with my high-level view opinion, which I always do. Then I'll get into a few of the specifics on the Phase Five Operation Plan. That is the reason for the special meeting. First, this is not a pandemic. In a pandemic, you would see yearly mortality numbers significantly higher than previous years. We're not seeing that. CDC has admitted that the PCR test cannot distinguish between the flu and COVID. This was the whole basis for the pandemic. Some health ministers in Europe are now coming forward to say that if the PCR test wasn't invented, no one would have even noticed this pandemic. Why do we continue to take guidance from the CDC? What is the CDC? It's not a government branch. It's not a private company, but it's an organization funded by private companies like Big Pharma. In reality, though, the CDC is a vaccine company and makes over five billion annually with vaccines. So they market, they lie and deceive, or at best severely bend the truth. Funny how people just discovered that the CDC paid millions to NFL alumni for them to push the propaganda on current players and leaders in the NFL. So many people don't trust the CDC, as we've heard tonight. But for those of you that do, what else have they admitted? Yes, vaccinated people are spreading the Delta variant just as much as unvaccinated people. Many medical professionals even think that the Delta variant is the vaccine.
Yep, yep.
Why get the vax, then? Why does this school continue to relentlessly push the vax and open up their school later this week for a clinic? It's disgusting. Why does the CDC and Big Pharma continue to silence true Why does the CDC and Big Pharma continue to silence true, cheap, proven cures like ivermectin and HCQ? The pivotal clinical trial for the Pfizer vaccine just came out. They found the vaccine did nothing to reduce death, zero. And Twitter is now banning people who actually post the results of Pfizer's trial. And like I've said in all my talks, let's discuss the adverse reactions from the vaccine again. We're now up to twelve thousand deaths, thirteen hundred miscarriages, although I don't know why that's not classified as death, five hundred thousand adverse reactions, thirteen thousand permanently disabled, forty-eight hundred heart attacks, and nothing more heartbreaking than the adverse neurological reactions being caused. Go search for it. May be a little difficult to find because it's being silenced, but shouldn't be too hard if you don't use Google. And yet, you, as a school, continue to relentlessly push these vaccines, dangle a carrot, promise back to normal for a promise you don't intend to keep. But now, to the specifics of the Phase, Phase Five Operation Plan from the document that was posted on their website today, the schools. Page six quoted, "Until more people are vaccinated, we join the CDC in recommending everyone, regardless of vaccination status, wear a mask indoors in areas of substantial and high transmission in K to twelve schools." Why schools, though? It's been proven all along that schools are not sources of spread. Less than one percent of tracing goes back to schools. There's no such thing as asymptomatic spread. Control, that's why we've woken up. If I read this document and I'm interpreting it correctly, it sounds like they want to adopt a plan based off community metrics. Low, moderate, substantial, and high. Mask optional for low and moderate, mask required substantial and high, many other ramifications, but I'll boil it down to just the masks to keep it simple. But again, like the last speaker said, based off two community metrics in there, the positivity rate and the cases per one hundred thousand. Anyone with a basic understanding of math will dismiss the positivity rate, one of the most misleading and negligent metrics out there. Lower the denominator with less people getting tested, rate goes higher. We don't need more people getting tested. We only need sick people getting tested. In which case, the positivity rate will be one hundred percent the way it should be. Second metric, cases per one hundred thousand. All right, fine. I'd still rather see hospitalizations and death metrics versus cases, but let's go with that one to keep the discussion going. So, from a board's perspective, you talk risk and liability and advisement from your lawyers that you wanna show you're making a reasonable effort to mitigate the outbreaks. So, again, I'm in favor with all these people. I wanna scrap the whole proposal, but I'm gonna play devil's advocate and maybe offer some alternate, again, just to keep the dialogue going. So, okay, makes sense you wanna have a table with some community metrics and say, if it goes here, we'll do this. All right, let's modify that slightly. Remove that stupid positivity rate metric. We'll go off cases only. Let's move the ban, too. Use only the most extreme measures in the high and not the substantial. You made no differentiation between substantial and high. You're gonna take the same measures of fifty people in the community test positive versus five thousand. Substantial, treated like low, moderate. So, yes, you're gonna go a little more aggressive, but you're still gonna have some protocol. Again, to protect yourself, like you say. Time to be bold, and if your lawyers aren't bold, find new ones. Tell them to get off their knees. And very importantly, we remove from this document what is on the top of page seven, additional factors regarding mitigation strategies. Giving the superintendent discretion, discretion you gave him from point six and seven on page two, to be able to not adhere to this table metrics if still not enough students are getting vaccinated or not enough are participating in S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, what does this have to do with anything? So, like I've said in all my other talks, this is a personal choice a student makes with their parents. We decide. The superintendent works for you and you work for us. We are the shareholders of the school. We should teach our children to stand up and say no. Imagine if three thousand high schoolers, their parents, and maybe some teachers, too, just said no. In my final words, and although they're not mine, many patriots out there will know exactly where this comes from. Stay together, be strong, get organized, be heard, fight the censorship. You, the people, have all the power. You simply forgot how to fight. Together, you are invincible. They want you divided, they want you silenced. Make noise. We are with you. Make it rain. God bless you all.
Quentin Hannan?
You're all good, you're all good. It's Homin. Well, I'm sixteen years old. I go here, Lockport High School. I'm going into my junior year. COVID started at the end of my, towards the end, maybe middle freshman year. Man, all that I can say is the way that the masks have affected me throughout the past school year, going into this next school year. You know, my parents always told me, oh, high school's gonna be so much fun. You're gonna go out with your friends, do little, little stupid things, you know, like whatever, it's gonna be fun. It feels like I started freshman year, and here I am, I'm gonna be a junior next year. Feel like my freshman year, my sophomore year, and now, with the masks possibly going into junior year, there it goes, out the window. When I'm gonna go from freshman to senior, wearing a mask? Now, a lot of you board members, if you guys are ever in the school, might not have recognized me, might recognize me like this, sound a little bit like that. But not like this, you know? But you look at things like the masks, how much they're affecting kids emotionally, physically. I mean, I know some kids with asthma can't breathe during the school day because they're walking up and down flights of stairs, they're walking down the hallways. They can't breathe because they have the masks on. Or you have other kids that have struggles connecting with people emotionally as friends, you know, whatever. They can't think or they can't talk to other people without seeing their facial expressions. You know, how am I supposed to know that somebody's happy or upset with what I'm saying if they can't smile or frown? How am I supposed to judge what my teachers think about what I'm saying if I can't see what they want me to see, you know, expression-wise? Another thing, going into these S.H.I.E.L.D. tests, I mean, nobody really realizes how much, I don't know, yea much human DNA is worth. Where are they going? Where are they going towards?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, ten dollars for every test? I'm not taking it. I don't, I don't care if you force me into the line to take it. I will step out and roll out. I'll step out of school early if I have to. I mean, that's not a big deal for me. But, you know, I think, I think it's ridiculous. We don't know where they're going. I mean, I don't want my DNA sent over, hell, three oceans and see where it goes. Oh, I don't know. Maybe my information will be on the black market somewhere. You know? Exactly, it's going to China, that's where it's going. But, I don't know, I think it's ridiculous to expect us to go for a whole nother year of masking. You know? And especially, it feels like when you're talking to people, it feels like you're talking to a mannequin. You ever see a crazy person talk to a mannequin before? I'll tell you, it's crazy. Don't ask me how I saw that. But they're standing there, they're talking to them, blah, 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 blah. The mannequin doesn't say anything. That's how you feel when you're talking to somebody with a mask on. No expression, just two people talking to each other, and it feels like such a disgusting conversation. I can't stand it. But I think overall, the biggest point here is that the kids wanna be kids again. I wanna be a kid again. You know? I mean, I got my brother in thirty-three C and, you know, he's excited. I mean, he has asthma and stuff like that. He's excited to go and attempt to go and run around with his friends again. He was scared to death by the virus because if he got it, there's a possibility that he could die. We were all worried about that. He got it, he was fine. So, then I started to realize, you know, maybe it really isn't that big of a deal. Now, whether you guys enforce the masks or not on the first day of school, I'm coming in without one. And, you know, I just really hope that you take into account what the, what I'm saying as a student, whether people are saying as parents, you know? Some of these parents are like, well, you know, my kids are saying this and that. I'm, I'm coming in because, you know what? I'm sick and tired of people. That's great reaction. There's, I'm sick and tired of everybody being like, you know, put your mask on, go and do this. I'm standing in a hallway, I mean, I'm almost six foot one. You know how terrible it is seeing a teacher just like yea tall, be like, put your mask on right now? I'm like... All right. Well, for my closing statements, I just really think that there should be no masks this year. Do not make a spit in the cups. I mean, for one, that's nasty. For two, I really don't need my DNA going anywhere where I don't know where it is. And if you need ten dollars, I will give you some out of the pocket if you really need it. But I hope you guys have a great night.
All right, I have a Nicole Pavlenik.
Hello. My name is Nicole Pavlenik. I live in Lockport. Today, the ISBE released their guidance, I have it right here, for COVID-19 prevention in K through twelve schools. It states that in addition to health and safety reasons for following the CDC's guidance, school districts that decide not to follow the CDC's guidance should consult with their insurers regarding risk assumption and liability coverage. Insurers may be, may be unwilling to cover liabilities created as a result of failure to adhere to public health guidance. Who on this board is concerned about any vaccine injuries that occurred during this trial? Or even mask injuries? Who will be liable when a teacher or staff or a student gets severely injured or dies from this vaccine? I know this may sound extreme to some of you. I mean, the words death, severely injured, those are some really deep words. But when you've lived it and witnessed severe vaccine injury, you tend to take these drug trials they're pushing on our developing children very seriously. Twenty-six years ago, my mother was severely injured by just one shot. Just one. A flu vaccine that had been on the market for years, but yet it is still responsible to this day for killing and severely injuring some, I'm sorry, severely injuring some people, making them handicapped, like my mother, for the rest of their lives. My mother got GBS, Guillain-Barre syndrome, which is also a side effect of this vaccine, this COVID-19 vaccine. She had to learn all normal mobility all over again. We all, the mobility that we all learned as a toddler. At the age of forty-six, she had to learn how to feed herself all over again. Walk, eat, talk, everything. God forbid something like this happened to one of our teachers, staff, or students. Please tell me, who is liable? Who is liable? Any of you? Are you gonna go to their house and help them feed themselves? And, and help them with their children? Any of you? None of you? Okay. All right. Will the school's insurers, since you're so concerned about the insurers, you know, paying, will they pay compensation to any people affected by, by the vaccine trials? Being pushed on our kids or by making them wear masks all day? The CDC also made and ISBE plans to follow major changes to guidance for this school year, which include the following. Promotion of the vaccination as the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. So, this, this is what is going to stop the mask madness? Vaccinations. It's bad enough that these vaccine manufacturers are allowed to be advertised all over the place, on TV, on YouTube billboards, but now, parents have to worry about this vaccine being pushed on our kids in our schools. We do not need to have our kids influencers urging them to get this drug that hasn't even been approved by the FDA or even after it's approved. It's our, it's our choice. It's our choice to decide what's best for our children. It's not yours. Do we need a reminder of what the Neuber code is? Is that not being taught in our schools? What exactly is the plan here? We know the ultimate goal is to push as many people to get vaccinated as possible. Then, parents can send their kids to school with no masks? My daughter should be attending District ninety-two, third grade classes this year. Last year, we decided to pull my daughter from public school and homeschool her because of the mask rules and our district, that our district decided to follow. Parents, if schools decide to still enforce masks, I urge you not to send your kids to school or send them to school with no masks on. Don't give in. Don't give in. They're your children. Do, do not let these board members make health decisions for your kids. Thirty seconds? Okay, thank you. I took a tour of this high school campus two years ago, and I remember being ecstatic that my kids would attend this beautiful campus with so much to offer them. There are parents like me who moved to this district just for school, just for the schools, but, and pay the taxes, okay? But when you take away our children's health freedom, the beauty of the school diminishes. You have parents who decide to just abandon ship and move out of Illinois or out of the district. But you have parents who stay and fight, who will do everything they can to get people running our schools that we can actually trust again. I can tell you this, we are not giving up anytime soon. And also, I would like to add, please, take the masks off the band members. They're blowing through a, a pipe where air is coming out with a hole in their mask. I mean, come on, in a parade, in ninety-plus weather. That is not right. Okay, that's it. Thank you so much.
All right, we have a Mr. Brent Porfilio.
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 I did wanna thank Dr. McBride and the school board for listening to all the parents and everyone else in the room tonight. But the most important thing I wanna stress is this flag right here and what it means. This flag right here means freedom. There's been numerous people in my family, from when they immigrated over from Italy, that fought for this country for freedom. There were veterans in here. Where they at? That fought for freedom. Freedom of choice, not to be told what to do. It's not the Republic of China flag, it's the United States of America flag. There's something that should be said about that. So, I came here about a year ago and objected to masks last, beginning of last summer, I believe, and I had a lot of research that I dictated. And thank you for, everybody, for sharing your research that you did and all the numbers and all the metrics that say masks aren't, they're not needed. I said it was like a chain-link fence trying to keep out mosquitoes. It's just ridiculous. It, it doesn't work. So, I'm here as a parent, I'm here as a voter, and I'm here as a taxpayer. So, as a parent, God blessed me with four children. I don't know why, but he did. I love my children. I've had three kids that went through the high school here. My oldest daughter was a senior last year, and this ruined her whole senior year. It ruined it, completely ruined it. It was a train wreck. And my youngest daughter now is a junior, and, and she would not come up and speak tonight. She's not like that. She said, Dad, speak for me. I don't wanna do it. I don't like wearing it. There's a lot of negatives about it, and I said, yeah, I know, honey, I know. And a lot of people tonight have already said that, and I don't need to repeat it. But as a parent, I don't want other people telling me what to do and, and what's the best for my kids. I should be the one that says that, especially with the lack of evidence that shows why masks should be used. There is not any study that I've ever seen that says a hundred percent of the sample size was protected from the virus because they were... from the virus because they wore the mask. I've never seen it. So if it's not 100%, it's like in court where they say, "You gotta prove somebody guilty within a reasonable doubt," or something like that. So, to me, that hasn't been proven to me. So as a parent, I choose to not let my kids wear masks, and that's the way that I feel as a parent. And I should have that right. You should not be the person that tells me what to do with my kids. I should be the one that tells them what to do. Not you guys! You're not their parent, I'm with them 24/7! Me, I should be the one telling them that! The second hat I'm wearing is a voter. So, a lot of people talked about voting. And, whether you're opposed on the ballot or not is not what's important. You're our mouthpiece, you represent all the people in this room, and the people that couldn't make it tonight. And you also represent the children, too, of the people that voted for all of you. And, you gotta think about that, that it's not based on what you think and what's your opinion. It's what we think and what's our opinion, because you're representing us! You're representing us! And because you're representing us, and we don't want masks, guess what? You should not vote for masks then! This is a simple thing, I don't understand it! It's never about opinion, it's about representing the people! That's what this flag is about, and democracy is about, is you guys are representing us! Not yourselves! Not being selfish! It's about us! That's how it should be! I don't know how much more, we all gotta, I don't think there's one person that stood up and said, "Oh, well, I think we should wear masks." Hands are up? Nobody said that. And the third hat I'm wearing, I'm trying to make this quick, is as a taxpayer. We all pay taxes, we pay the salaries of the teachers in the school, and the superintendent, and everything else, and we work hard for our money, and we want to see our money spent in the right way. So, when you make a decision tonight, you need to think about all of the things we talked about, and think about what the rest of the people, the sample of the people that are in the public. I would think if they were that strong about wearing masks and being pro-mask, they would have came out tonight! The sample size of the community here is 100% against masks! 100%!
That's right.
You might have taken a survey, Dr. McBride, I understand that, but you gotta base things on what the people want. That's what a democracy is. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a Mr. Jeffrey Pock.
First, I just want to say, does this make you feel safe? It doesn't. It doesn't mean anything to me. Just so you know, I'm not vaccinated, and I don't plan on getting vaccinated. The story I'm trying to explain is, you want everybody to wear masks or not wear masks, that's, I guess, a choice, okay? Everybody has a choice. We already found out that the vaccinations don't, are not 100%. It's like a flu shot. You get it if you want it, you don't get it if you don't want it. That's the way I feel about that. These masks, I know, I know a professional football player, and they don't, they, right now, wear bands to tell you who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated. Alright? That's ridiculous. So the news reporter can sit 50 feet or 50 yards away from the field and know who's vaccinated on the field and who's not. Same thing with these masks. If you do, if you sit there and put half the people in, and say, "If you're vaccinated, you gotta wear a mask, if you're not vaccinated, you have to wear it." Okay, so, now, everyone in the school knows who's vaccinated and who's not. I don't need my daughter getting bullied by someone who is vaccinated because she's wearing a mask and she's not vaccinated. I've already had the same problem, when my wife and my daughter go shopping, they walk into a store and the first thing they get is, "Oh, you don't have to wear the mask." Okay, it's their choice, they want to wear the mask. They weren't, they don't have to, but they want to. So they already have ignorant people jumping on them the minute they walk into a store, just because they're wearing a mask. Same thing's gonna happen here. No offense, I was the kid who got bullied in school. Well, guess what, I grew up.
Yes, sir.
Okay? I'm not standing for this, and I don't appreciate the whole thing with...I heard, over the long time, see, I've been in this town for not even a year yet, I just moved here August 15th of last year. Jumped in as a freshman, two, three weeks late. Since then, I've heard so many things go on in this place, it's ridiculous. I thought fighting with the school that we left was bad, this one's worse. Everything we do is 10 times worse here. Wish I could remember everything, but I didn't write it down, I wasn't really planning on speaking, but, it's just, I don't need the bullyingness. And I know, you guys can sit there and say all you want, that it's never gonna happen, guess what? We all went to school, it does happen, behind your backs, you'll never know it. But, these things, they don't do anything. The only reason I wore it is because you're signing up right at the door, said, "Where, if I wasn't vaccinated." So I did it to make you happy. Does this make you feel safe? Does it mean? I never, I haven't worn this, this is probably the fifth time I actually wore this mask. In 10 months. I'm not gonna wear it. My daughter, oh! There is one thing. I also know about the, the testing for the kids. You come near my daughter with a Q-tip or any testing material without my permission, I'm gonna get a hold of the first lady who spoke here and say that she has a lawyer-armed retainer, I'm talking to her next.
Yes, we're gonna have a five-minute break before we have our superintendent's update, okay? That's correct.[1018.82]
And I will try the best I can, you know, I've got a mic here. I apologize to the people at home. If it sounds like I'm yelling at you, I'll use my principal voice and Mr. Johnson, if I see you at, you know, wave at me, it means you can't hear me. And then I'll know that I'll just sort of, you know, amplify it a little bit more. One of the things I want to do, you know, typically in a board, we have a superintendent report. Typically, that includes all sorts of goings on in the district. In this particular case, it's really going to walk through this plan. But before we do that, a typical superintendent's report in a timely way, we would acknowledge some things that have happened in the district. And we had a very difficult thing happen in the district recently. One of our recent graduates, Mr. Connor Christian, 2021 graduate, regrettably, I believe last Thursday, I might be off by a day, Friday, thank you, Mr. Ives, lost his life in his struggle with cancer. So can we just center ourselves and just take a minute to remember this very fine young man, a fine baseball player, a student who walked these halls, was a porter for all four years. Could you just take a moment of silence? Thanks. And our hearts are with his parents, his family. Can't imagine that that kind of loss for a family. So let's, let's get into the Phase Five Return to School Plan. And the Phase Five is a reference to Illinois's Restore Illinois Plan, which all of you know, we are, we are in Phase Five right now. Most important thing that I would advise you as a Board of Education is to keep school open. Many of the comments tonight have referenced the importance of students being in school. We have some lessons from the pandemic that help us understand that when school is closed, learning can continue. But I think there's a fair recognition that it's not quite the same as what we expect for our students. So much so that the state of Illinois has mandated, and we spoke about this last month in July, that learning is full in person and schools should do everything possible to maintain that status. In order to do that, I think we have to think very carefully about our students. But I also would ask you as Board of Member, Board members, to also think about the staff, our nursing staff, our teaching staff, their health, well-being, level of stress, as many of the speakers mentioned already this evening, has a great deal to do with the durability and sustainability of an event like the one that we are in right now. We're all rallied around public education. We obviously all believe it's important. That's a good thing for so many people to feel passionate about public education, for sure. But what I would suggest to you that this plan intends to keep school open and keep, keep school going, full in person, five days a week, you know, except when we have holidays and breaks and things, things like that. Student safety and student learning. It would also be important for this Board of Education to acknowledge that you have, as many people have mentioned, 18 months of experience. This is our year last year. 3,189 contact tracing events of students who had positive COVID, close contact, or had COVID-like symptoms. You have three spikes. All of those spikes were predicted in October. That was a predicted spike that happened. You'll see we had at one point, 20% of our students were on quarantine. And I didn't say 20% had COVID, 20% were in quarantine. That did not allow us with those students in quarantine to continue at-person learning because the persons weren't here. So we did have to go into remote learning, you might recall, until winter break. Another spike was predicted right after winter break, not as severe as the one in the fall. We did experience that. We did see that. I know it might be hard for you to see, but we had almost 200 students in quarantine. And then the final spike that was predicted was pre and post-spring break last year, which we did experience, although it was very difficult when we went full in person on April 12. We did not have as many students out on quarantine for those last nine weeks of school as we did right after, the three weeks after spring break, where we were up in the, in the 200s, almost 300s of students on quarantine. I mentioned that lesson to you because as we get into it, close contact tracing and quarantine will still be part of our responsibility to public health. And quarantine has been the thing that has interrupted school the most. And that's important to keep in mind. At least at one point last year, it caused us to go full remote. And it also caused us to be in hybrid as well, as well you know. Lots of ways to interpret this experience, but I'd remind you, you have a staff of 600 individuals, administrative team, that, that has experience keeping school going during a pandemic. And we were open and in person more days than most, more days than most in Lockport Township, and more days than most than in some of our outlying areas in our high school districts. So important to know. So what is before you in terms of this plan? You've got a resolution, and I'll explain that resolution in a moment. You've got decision-making metrics and guides, things that, that can guide us, we believe, after a year of experience. And then some operational procedures, all three of which work to, to, to keep school open. I want to jump into the establishment of guidance and the plan implementation and pandemic policy. One of the things that I think is the most important thing, and, and I would say this now as I get into this and consider my own role, I'm happy to take criticism. I'm absolutely happy to take criticism. But I'd ask everyone really to measure as an adult, two things. First, our staff. When our staff makes calls, when our staff reaches out to parents, that there is a human being at, at the end of the line. And one of the most difficult things last year was the toll that some of those conversations took. I don't mind those conversations, but I'd ask everyone to keep, keep that in mind. I'd also ask everyone to keep in mind that we are presently right now in a very deep struggle as adults about teaching students how adults solve problems. And so that's important to remember as well. So the establishment of guidance. In the establishment of guidance, the board, many of the speakers are exactly correct in that you as a board do have to decide the institutions that will guide you. You are a public institution with a public responsibility. In a few minutes, I will mention that you do have a pandemic policy, Policy 4:180. In that policy, you rely, in that policy, you say that you will lie on the state of Illinois, its government, and IDPH, and Will County Public Health. And as you know, and also Illinois State Board of Education, there is a connection to the CDC, however we feel about that. So the resolution asks you to, to resolve that these would be the institutions that you would take your guidance from, public institution to public institution. Each of us as individuals have a right to pick our own doctors, to seek our own research, to make our own decisions. But the thinking that, that this plan asks you to do is to act as an institution. And sometimes as an institution, we have to think about the needs of the institution as opposed to perhaps the needs of the individual. So the resolution does advise you as Board members that these are the organizations, public body to public body, that we're recommending as a team, your attorneys are recommending to you as a team, your liability insurers are recommending to you as a team as well. Then there's also actually in the resolution, plan implementation and pandemic policy guidance. In your pandemic policy, 4:180, you empower me to do a number of things. You ask me to assemble a team. We have a team that's not as big this year, but it consists of the following people, a steering committee that we work with our union on, our nursing team, we met with our nursing team today, very important individuals in managing this crisis, our leadership team, our staff in, in general as a team to get their feedback, and not only listen to a team, but also poll stakeholders. And in a moment, I'll talk a little bit about polling stakeholders. We have a standing parent focus group, a number of people, about 45 people over the course of the year, that have volunteered to get online, were online with us twice this summer, to give their perspective and their thoughts. And then also I'll, I'll make a mention of the survey that you heard a number of the speakers speak to as well. Then our other job in this is to communicate decisions, try to build awareness. As you know, Janine Wheeler's done a fabulous job already. Our new COVID-19 page, it was launched last week, and it's had 1,000 visits already to really put information at people's fingertips. Board meetings like this, you know, we last Thursday published this meeting and all of its contents, the resolution last Thursday morning, that's always available on our, on our website. And then just to build awareness, awareness of options, awareness of decisions, and a timeliness and transparency of decisions. I want to leave the, this presentation just for a moment, to open up the Thought Exchange dashboard and tell you a little bit about Thought Exchange too. Thought Exchange is a different kind of survey than most surveys out there. It uses crowdsourcing and it uses language. What it does is it encourages people to interact with each other in a safe space, although this space, I will tell you, was not so safe. Lot of name-calling on both sides, lot of anger on both sides. This humble superintendent says that doesn't do anyone good and doesn't move us forward. And what it does is it tries to pick the words that are common in the middle and maybe form sides so that you as a board can understand what sides might be out there, but what everybody agrees on. So it's a different way of surveying. But the neatest thing I think about Thought Exchange is the opportunity for you to go in and you to interact with other people's thoughts. You see them anonymously and you give them a rating. You give them a star rating on a scale of one to five. So let me walk you through this briefly. And obviously, Board members, you know, you can stop me anytime and ask questions. So this Thought Exchange was closed. I usually leave it. I said it was going to be Friday, but a lot of times I close it a day after. Sometimes people forget I'm a parent as well. That happens to me. So we had a total of 1,500 participants. Those 1,500 participants shared 1,300 thoughts, 1,343, and 60,000 times those thoughts were rated. So there were 60,000 interactions between thoughts in this entire exchange. We'll come to the thoughts in, in just a second because there's one dashboard that I think is the most helpful and timely for this presentation. But if you take a look, these are some of the questions that were referenced earlier. And I apologize if for some reason a Board member can't see it because of the grids, just give me a holler. So the first question was layers of prevention. And this was asked not in a binary way, or a this or that way, just what is on people's minds. There's lots of issues out there on people's minds. And I think it's helpful for you as Board members to know, what issue is, is in a person's mind the most? You had 19% of the respondents said variants of COVID. 37% said masking. Only 8% increases in community spread. 7% said cleaning and ventilation at school, which is interesting because you might recall a year ago, that was the highest response. Most people were concerned about that. And then 29% said close contact tracing and loss of school time due to quarantine procedures. So you can kind of see the issues that are emerging in people's minds. The very next question, now, we released this before we got last week's updated guidance, and I believe it was July 27. So we simply asked a question that you were exploring with me. We asked, in addition to other strategies, all students should mask, or masks are recommended for unvaccinated students. They're optional for vaccinated students. So which would people, you know, how do they feel about it? Of the respondents, 39% said universal masking, and 61% said recommended on an honor system. So that kind of gave you a sense. And you'll see that play itself out, about 60/40. And what that does for you is, is it, what that does for you is it tells you that, that you've got, you've got some discord in the community, right? The final thing was a question about S.H.I.E.L.D., just to give us an idea about S.H.I.E.L.D. And, and I'll make a mention in this presentation about S.H.I.E.L.D. because it's part of the plan and where it falls into the plan. But 36% said they would enroll S.H.I.E.L.D., participated. 24%, I'm not interested in that. And you know, all these things are optional. And then 40% said, I need more information. We're doing a webinar tomorrow night at 7:00 PM to try to provide a little bit more information for folks. There's a couple different ways of looking at this data, but, but I think the best way is to look in, let me just make sure I don't have this open. It probably went stale. I think the best way is to look at similarities and differences. And given the size of this, it'll take a second to generate it. So let me tell you what you're, what you're looking at. The crowdsourcing picked up that there is an issue out there that is of great passion, the word masks. And what you're looking at is it forms a side A and it forms a side B. Side A, I think the comment at the top represents side A well. And you can see, people who affiliated with side A gave this five stars. It was the highest rated statement for side A. The people in the green only gave it 1.2 stars. So you can see the difference of opinion. Side B, you can see that comment. People on the blue, on the mask, the anti-mask side, I guess I would call it, gave that only one star, while people on the universal masking gave it 4.9. So top, you know, top statement, let them go to school in a normal way and stop all these restrictions. On the side B, please mandate masks for all. There is not an easy way to ensure that unvaccinated students remain compliant with, with mask wearing. So it's another person. You had, when, what you're seeing is you're not seeing total participants. You're seeing, yeah, I'll do middle in a second. You're seeing, when you see that blue and that green, what you're seeing is you're seeing starred thoughts. Not every thought gets starred. People contribute thoughts, not everyone gets starred. But there were 464 starred thoughts related to not wearing masks, 293 related to wearing masks, which again, turns out to be, if you do that math of, of those thoughts that got starred, about 60/40. If you see in the middle, there's a clear agreement, and this is one where, place where we want to put our knowledge to play. There is clear agreement on both sides. Both sides rank these statements highly that, hey, if you guys, it might be hard for them to hear and they need to hear this information. So I would just appreciate your courtesy. So everyone agrees, 4.8, 3.7, kids need to be in class. There is a comment about remote learning, providing remote learning. And as you know, the Illinois State Board of Education has created a very narrow aperture for remote learning. We're back to 2019 where only, remote learning is really only for our five emergency days, where students with extreme medical situations. So the state board has moved us back to that. But if you go down, the whole thing has been politicized. There's a great agreement on that. It's important to have in-person learning, having access to online learning. Kids need to be in school every day. And so really, the nucleus of this was formed off of the idea of our experiences and what it takes to have kids in this situation in school every single day. That's really our mission as a team, as a pandemic, a pandemic team. I'd also make a mention of the members of our parent focus group. We had a great conversation. You had people who were supporting universal masking. You had people vaccinated and unvaccinated that did not want to wear masks. You had people talking to each other when we met last week and explaining that. And they were very clear and they were able to talk to each other and, and explain to each other why they felt the way they felt. We had a nurse at University of Chicago who was exhausted and very impassionately said to everyone, you know, consider your healthcare workers. And that resonates with me because I would hope that everyone would consider the, the stress and the difficulty on our staff, our 600 people last year.
People in the audience, you must be respectful of us and definitely respectful of people. We gave you an opportunity. We never, we were never talking among our ears while you were there in public.
Speaking, so I give, please, give us that consideration.
Well, when you're not scolding him, I'll show you respect.
No.
I saw you scolding him.
Go ahead, Dr. Winfrey.
So one thing they said universally, there was universal agreement, was compassion. You know, they just all asked, every person said compassion, empathy for others, whatever situation they're in, that was important. So that work goes on with that school focus group. Moving away from that in a, in a timely way, just, just sort of jumping down here. So I want to pause on the resolution and just recapitulate two things. The resolution asks you to designate and who your sources are. And it also asks you to coordinate with your existing policy, Policy 4:180. And endorsing that resolution, however you vote, really leads you to both of those places. You might recall as a board last year, using that pandemic policy, it was your decision that, that the team would consistently report to you. I would consistently report to you. But then rather than having board meetings where each mitigation or each move or remote learning or hybrid learning was a separate vote, that you would work through that pandemic policy and my work with you to, to make those decisions. Let me just pause on the resolution. And obviously, you might have questions towards the end. But that's the first part of the plan. You resolve those two things. And it's our recommendation as a leadership team that you do, you know, resolve those two. And it's our recommendation as a leadership team that you do, uh, you know, resolve those two. That those are our sources and um, that you use your current policy. Please stop me if I'm moving on. So then we get into the, in, in the, the plan, decision-making metrics and, and guidelines. And, and I failed to mention, um, for personal reasons, uh, which I hope everyone would respect here, I was wearing a mask. Um, but in speaking, I want to be heard, uh, so that, that assists me in kind of throwing things all the way to the room and also a clarity for our folks at home. So in terms of decision-making metrics and guides, finding something derived from those sources that we can use to respond. And what I would recommend to you, if we've learned anything in this pandemic, is to have a situational response. Right now, it feels like there are many people who want it either to be this or to be that. And it has to be and. We cannot predict where this year is going to go. None of us want to be where we're at right now. All of us were surprised by the turn of events last week. And we have lots of experience last year that the minute we plan something, you know, we walked into this school on August twelfth, we thought things were going one way, they went a different way. And we had to, to, to do some planning. So a situational response, rather than a hard and fast, inflexible plan, is something that I hope can speak to many people. It can respond to the present moment, but it's not a permanent situation. I don't think any of these mitigations should be permanent. Our goal is to get rid of them all. That's the day we all hope to see and we're all, all um, you know, thinking that way. So what does that situational response uh, look like? Uh, the CDC has released three actual metrics, uh, one of them we don't have. Uh, so they have put things in low, moderate, substantial, high. Uh, here in Will County, we, we just don't have the data right now about our communal vaccination. So I did not include this in this plan. Uh, the two that we can access on a fairly routine basis is the positivity rate and the cases per one hundred thousand. And these are the metrics that, that dictate those, uh, low, moderate, substantial, high. Presently, um, Will County, all of Will County and all the counties surrounding it are in substantial. In our three zip codes, uh, I didn't have a chance to check today, but uh, later today, uh, but two of our zip codes are in substantial. One is right on the edge. When these metrics are taken, it's not a one-day sample. It's really a seven-day, you'll hear this thing, seven-day rolling average, to see a consistent pattern. Um, the data is not strong if it's just taken on one day. That's called a snapshot. But in seven days, that gives you a sense of what's happening. And then also another seven days to, to resolve things. So if you think of a situational response, some of our situational responses could last as short as fourteen days. Um, there's some additional factors that we've been asked to consider by IDPH, CDC, Will County Public Health. Um, one, what's, what's the vaccination rate among our students? That's an unknown. We're going to ask families for their convenience this week. They don't have to. We're not requiring anyone to give us our va, their vaccination status, but it certainly will create a convenience for them. Because if we don't have that on record, like any health record, uh, we have to respond to that child as unvaccinated. And we want to save folks, um, so maybe some inconveniences. Uh, and additional factors, we don't know what our enrollment in S.H.I.E.L.D. will be. S.H.I.E.L.D. is like vaccination. It's not required. The model that we picked is a model that people have to actively turn in a consent form this week. They have to make that choice and say, "I want that." And I'll explain in a few minutes the, the benefits and the drawbacks of S.H.I.E.L.D. Uh, but that could also help us, and what S.H.I.E.L.D. will do, and I explained it, is it helps us establish metrics here. Not someplace else, not in Wilmington, but right here in, in, with our students. And then the quarantine rate, I'm, I'm sorry, the positive student COVID cases, that helps us. We don't know that yet. And then also the quarantine rate of students. Uh, last year, as I mentioned before, high quarantine rate really begins to hobble in-person learning and the mission is full in-person learning. We just don't know these factors and we have to look at these factors to make a good decision. We'll know some of these by the end of the week. So operational procedures, uh, there's only two new mitigations here, but these are the top operational procedures. Talk a little bit about masking, physical distancing, vaccination status, S.H.I.E.L.D., and then close contact and in quarantine. So masking. Uh, this is one of our bus drivers, Terry Sullivan. Thank you for the present, Terry, if, if you're listening. Uh, all of those organizations that I mentioned to you before are requiring a must that on all forms of public transportation, buses included, that masks are mandatory. A number of you, it's in the plan, also recognize that you cannot maintain physical distance in our hallways either. Masking, uh, we know what the recommendation is right now. Those organizations, CDC, IDPH, Will County Public Health, its surrounding public health, um, your lawyers and uh, your liability insurers believe that those recommendations are very important. And speakers are right tonight, that a recommendation is a recommendation. And I, I would submit that it doesn't have to be a mandate to be a good recommendation. Um, I'm dealing with a health issue right now. Uh, thankfully, not a serious one, but I, it will be serious if, if I don't follow the recommendation of my doctor. I don't have to. I have the right to say no and I have the right to go get a second opinion. But in my particular case, uh, recommendation is something I should take seriously, right? And uh, that's something you have to consider. You have a strong, and I will tell you in this pandemic, the strongest recommendation on the table. Right now, in a situational response, right now. Physical distancing, you know, last uh, year, I with fellow superintendents fought very hard based on our data to reduce the quarantine, uh, the physical distancing to three feet. We didn't get that done last year. Uh, but we did a lot of hard lobbying work and we got that done this year. So the distance now between students, and we've staged our entire campus three feet apart. So uh, contact, close contact is if you are closer than three feet for more than fifteen minutes. We can put in every situation, students three feet apart, lunch, classrooms, and in places where we can put students further apart, we should do that and we'll do that. That helps us because six feet was the single most definitive factor last year in terms of students being in quarantine. It's going to help us tremendously. Uh, very important. Feel really good about that. Uh, vaccination status. There is no vaccination mandate. Let me just say it again. There's no vaccination mandate. The state is not mandated. We are not mandating it. Uh, but we do believe that it's important that people have the opportunity to easily access the vaccine. If that is what they decide, uh, we want to create that pathway. Why? Because we know right now that vaccinated status assists a student tremendously in terms of being in quarantine or not in quarantine, and we want students in school. And I want to, I want to make a mention of that to you, just to remind board members. He, here's what I want to remind board members, is you know, oftentimes in this, people would say, "We, we chose, we chose to put students in quarantine," and indeed, I guess we did. But you would be running afoul directly, and this isn't a legal clinic, but there is a disaster proclamation right now. On this regard, it gives the IDPH and Will County Public Health legal standing. And to not use contact tracing in quarantine procedures, you would be directly outside of that, that disaster proclamation, which just got extended. So when we use close contact and we use quarantine, this is us acting in our responsibility to local public health and state public health. No nurse, no administrator wants to call a parent and say that they're going to be in a quarantine. Um, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. Um, and vaccination is a choice that a parent can make to avoid that process. It's a parent choice, but it's a tool for parents. S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is another tool for parents. Uh, we are not receiving, our books are open. You know that we're audited annually. We'll be going through that process. All of our um, books are open to the public. There is no financial remuneration, no money that we receive from S.H.I.E.L.D. Uh, it is accurate that this is likely federal money that is supporting S.H.I.E.L.D. um, in the state of Illinois. S.H.I.E.L.D. is uh, perhaps the most sensitive COVID test in the world. It kept a respected institution, University of Illinois, developed here in Illinois, not in some other state or some other place, open last year with a campus of sixty thousand people, generally testing twice a week, uh, individuals. Um, so there's no financial remuneration that we receive. Um, we are offering this as an option, both to vaccinated and unvaccinated students. Why? If you're a vaccinated student and you have a symptom of COVID, you might want to rule that out, that you don't have COVID. And you can get that result within two days, which no PCR test at any other facility can give that to you that quickly or is authorized to give it to that, to that quickly. You're an unvaccinated student and you've had a close contact. You want to stay in school. S.H.I.E.L.D. testing can help you with that. It doesn't require you uh, to get vaccinated, doesn't require you uh, to participate in S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. And this board has decided you have to opt into it. So what S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is designed to do is give families an option to avoid quarantine. That's really the whole purpose for it. Uh, we're lucky that we got in, in June, because many districts are coming in now, most districts are coming in now, and it's very difficult for them to get their programs up and running. Uh, so I'm glad you were, you were out in front of that. Um, operational procedures. This is a great, in terms of quarantine, this is a great unknown. Um, what this is, is, this is the exclusion chart. And I would not try to read this if I was a board member. Um, but basically, we are waiting any day to get an exclusion chart that will explain precisely what the quarantine procedures will be and what the close contact procedures will be. We have tried to set everything up that we are not in the quarantine and in the close contact and the contact tracing business. But, but we need help. Um, we're giving choices, vaccination, S.H.I.E.L.D. testing uh, to families. We hope they'll take advantage. Um, there now are different levels of quarantine, which we also lobbied for last spring. Fourteen-day, ten-day, seven-day, and then something through S.H.I.E.L.D. called Test to Stay. If you're enrolled in S.H.I.E.L.D., uh, you're able, uh, if you're unvaccinated or you're vaccinated and you have symptoms, to test day one, three, uh, five and seven, and stay in school as long as you're negative. Uh, quarantine is going to rest on your vaccination status. In some cases, were you wearing a mask or not? And if you're enrolled in S.H.I.E.L.D., it gives you a way potentially out of that. Uh, the thing that we're stressing here at freshman orientation and at welcome back days is, is sign up for S.H.I.E.L.D. because like so many things, because your information has to be protected. It's protected by HIPAA. It's protected by FERPA. That level of security doesn't just happen if you decide to walk in and sign up for S.H.I.E.L.D. It takes days to make sure you're in a secure system, that your information's going to your parent and going to the school, and that's it. Uh, operational procedures, um, they're related. These operational procedures are supported uh, by our facilities and in the plan, all the work that we do facilities-wise, uh, ventilation, cleaning, separation, lunch, our lunch procedures, our participation in a lunch program that creates a free lunch for all students. So there's no long lines, no money changing hands, uh, the importance of communication, uh, and constantly communicating. We plan to do that again this year. And then liability. I do want to make a mention of liability. Certainly, lots of people have talked about legal liability. They've talked about insurance liability here as well. Um, and, and that is a fact. There is no insurance product that you can buy as a board that will protect you uh, against any kind of lawsuit related to uh, disease. Uh, your immunity, your tort immunity exists on your ability to create layers of mitigation. Uh, your ability to say, "We did everything possible," would be the question that would be asked if you ever had a liability. Um, I want to explain so everyone knows because there's been a great interest in taxpaying in this meeting. Because we have no insurance, if we ever had a settlement go against us, you know that we've had uh, um, cases where our insurance has paid that settlement. This would not be a case, in any case, if we lost a settlement, uh, that, that insurance would pay for it. Um, that debt that's created would, would have to be absorbed by the district financially. It would have to be passed on possibly in a levy, but that's something that I think you should keep in mind institutionally. Because there will be someday, other board members, other folks in the district, um, that are going to come after you and the institution has to go on. But finally, I, I'd mention, you know, liability. Um, we have a year of experience and liability is also when you come into an experience and you know you can predict, you understand what is going to happen. Liability is also, as many speakers have said, I would agree with them, that it is a moral and an ethical responsibility. Uh, my team, our, our pandemic team, we want kids in school. Uh, our moral compass, our ethical compass is kids in school. We'll do anything. We'll work with anybody. We'll have any conversation, put in any procedure where we can keep kids in school. And what we hope with a situational response is that some of our mitigations are temporary. Um, but we need everybody in this thing. We need everybody pulling to get us to a better place. Um, finally, just the principles that you articulated last year, safety at the top, equity, access to school, you're second, flexibility, being in a flexible environment, that's what this is suggesting, learning and then uh, promoting responsibility and being able to respond. Questions? That's my, that's my presentation. Yeah, Mr. Ives.
Two questions or a point of clarification. Um, when we talked about the situational response based on the criteria where they are, um, you said, because it comes out weekly, right? Once a week, they, you know, they give us an about where we are, where we stand in the county.
It comes out daily. Uh, it's updated almost, it's one day behind.
Right, but the seven-day.
Right, but the seven-day, you really, I think the responsible thing would be to look at the seven-day rolling average.
Right. And, but you talked about it being effective for fourteen days. Why wouldn't it roll, why wouldn't we roll?
Right, if you look, so, that's a really good question. So let's say we have to make a decision. We, we would never look at a single-day metric, so we'd wait seven days to see how that plays out. Let's say on the seventh day, we make a decision about a mitigation, right?
Right.
We would need an additional seven days to really reassess um, where, where that, where the, the current condition is. So that's why I meant sort of fourteen days, seven-day run-up, additional seven days to see uh, where that rolling seven-day averages. So sort of a, a fourteen-day uh, decision-making window, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. And thank you for that. And the other question I had is that, and I don't know, in reading and looking into everything, um, especially with what the state was talking about, with the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, if we didn't have S.H.I.E.L.D. testing here at all, does that put us back to six feet?
It does. So we can use the.
And, and if we go back to six feet, we have a very hard time bringing all our kids back full-time.
We have a hard time on two levels. Um, the first level is just physically doing it.
Oh, yeah.
And then the second level is if six feet is the quarantine distance, then you would see some of those epic quarantine numbers. Um, so there is a relationship there. If you have a surveillance testing,
Right.
Um, we could use binax now, but the, the difficulty with binax now is that binax now is only when you're symptomatic. It's also a nasal swab that's more invasive.
And not, yeah, I get it, yeah. Alright, so yeah, so that's allowing us, you know, one thing, you know, we do the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, get all our kids back here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And you as a board, however many students participate in S.H.I.E.L.D., you know, we had a pilot this year, um, this summer. It, it would allow you to, as a board, to study actual metrics among actual students.
Yeah.
Obviously, the higher the sample size, more participants, you have a truer snapshot of what's happening among youth. A, a small sample size that might test weekly, the recommendation right now would be once weekly. Uh, obviously, if we have three thousand students uh, tasked, we wouldn't be able to do three thousand students weekly. We would probably stretch it out a little, little bit further.
So what you're saying is eventually based off of, so you said you looked at our zip codes and things like that and where we are on the metric, on scale. We could technically start, depending on the enrollment, look at the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, see what our student body testing, and that would determine where we are.
That would be a data point. You would, you would have another data point. So you'd have the county data point. You'd have the zip code data point. You'd have a student population data point. Three data points, I think, is more healthy and helpful in understanding what is actually happening with our students. Um, I, I think it's a powerful data point. I, I wouldn't use S.H.I.E.L.D. if I didn't think it created probably the most powerful data point. Because one of the things we learned last year, um, is that sometimes what was happening in the adult community and in Will County, for example, was not necessarily what was happening with students. Uh, students sometimes had different behaviors because they wanted to play sport. And you know, we, we never stopped playing sport except for when, uh, a period of time between November and January last year when the IHSA discontinued sport. But we didn't discontinue practices, workouts, things like that. Uh, we just didn't have competition, right? Um, so it, it could be a very, very helpful metric. We just saw last year at times that what, what was happening in the student population didn't, didn't mirror itself. didn't, didn't mirror itself in the adult population. That would also help our team tremendously. Um, it would also help our team, um, by not having so many students on quarantine. And it would help families by not having so many students in quarantine. Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
Who gets the results of the S.H.I.E.L.D. test? And how, and how secure is it?
That's a really good question. Um, we found it highly secure. Uh, there's only two recipients. Uh, our two, uh, nurses that are kind of our head nurses, uh, uh, Central and, and East receive it, and then the parent receives it. Um, I found the system very easy to use. I tried S.H.I.E.L.D., uh, as I mentioned, maybe a week and a half ago or two weeks ago, to try to, try to check the parent portal and if I was a patient, and I found it quick. Uh, what it told me is it told me when my sample was collected. It told me where my sample was taken, what hospital or lab it was taken at, and whether or not that hospital lab was CLIA certified, the certi- certificate, at what time my sample was tested, and then at what time the results were, were emailed to me. So it's only parent and only school.
So the nurse doesn't say anything to the student?
The nurse does. Our responsibility is obviously if we get negatives, we're not doing anything, right? But if we do have a positive, uh, that's when we would communicate first to the parent, then to the student, you know?
If you have any positive, you go to the parent first.
Right. But hopefully, you know, we, we might be one step behind the parent, because we would be looking at a report of multiple students, the parents looking at their child, right?
Fair enough.
You know? And one of the things we're trying to do, Mr. Ives, is, you know, we're just trying to do everything. People might recognize these. Uh, these were the passes when we had a COVID issue with a student that we had to send from our health offices to a student. We're really trying to avoid sending these out again. If we can do this, um, rarely or in a more discreet way, um, or avoid it entirely, that, that's really what we're trying to do in this plan. Yeah, Ms. Johnson?
How would you go about doing it when they first come into school in the morning?
Great question. It'll, it will depend on volume, how many sign-ups we have this week. Uh, there's a few things we do not want to interrupt. We don't want to interrupt classes, although it takes about two to three minutes. It's, we've been surprised in the pilot how quickly, um, I, I've just been shocked. I've watched it, it takes, right now, it's taking place right outside my office. On, uh, Wednesdays, the pilot is, is, for all intents purposes, over. It's very quick. Um, in a lot of schools, students were just walking to class and they walked through like a gym and just kept walking, picked up their vial, drooled, there's no other way to say it, and then just dropped it off and didn't even stop walking, right? There is one, we have to position it, so we don't want to interrupt school, uh, classes. We know that people have a hard time in the morning. Um, but there is also something, you should not eat an hour before you, uh, drool. If you do, you will generally, um, have an inconclusive test, not a positive test. So if we can position in the morning, we have a couple ideas. We might use it during Compass, which is our advisory period. That be, might be once for a student every two or three weeks. Uh, we might be able to have a lunch option before students, uh, take lunch. And we might even be able to do it before school, uh, if we have a super high volume. Uh, and then also, we would have to establish either an outdoor or an exterior, uh, room for any students who are symptomatic. Symptomatic students shouldn't come in, in campus. One mitigation that I didn't mention is stay home if you're sick. That helps so much. And if your child's sick, our community's done a great job with that. Um, but let's say your child's sick, you want to rule out COVID quicker than you can anyplace else. We would set up, if you're in the S.H.I.E.L.D. program, either a curbside or an exterior door where you just come in, S.H.I.E.L.D. test, and you leave. There, there is a relationship, uh, you know, if you have another ques- there, there, this cannot be stressed enough. There is a relationship, when I go back to this, there, there will be a relationship between vaccination status, masking and S.H.I.E.L.D. There's, there's no way around it for us or for you as a board, uh, with your responsibility on contact tracing and quarantine. It's not my job to advise anyone on vaccination. That's a family decision, you should make that. But, but I will tell you, it, we, we have to treat vaccinated students differently. And if students are close contact, we won't even contact those students, right? All right? And then also, if you're an unvaccinated student, wearing a mask will be the most helpful thing that you can do. I'm just telling you as a board right now, and I'm telling these folks as well, because we don't want to make quarantine calls. That, that's actually what we want to avoid.
You cannot legally make a quarantine call, only the health department can do that, or a parent can quarantine a kid, like, you can't.
Yeah, Mr. Ives?
It's illegal.
Excuse me. At the, uh, at the start of the school year, my daughter, who's graduated, she's not here anymore, but, you know, if she was here and we decided, you know, we don't want to do the S.H.I.E.L.D., we, at the start of the school-
You don't want to do it, yeah.
That's fine. But, you know, things, how the metric's going and how things are going, I'm hoping what's upon us now may hopefully get better sooner rather than later, I, you know, we all hope. But if like, October, we decide, you know, maybe we do want to sign up for S.H.I.E.L.D., can we do that, or do we have to do it before the school year starts?
You, you absolutely can. Um, S.H.I.E.L.D. has a current expiration date, you know, the, the state is aware. Everyone hopes that we don't need S.H.I.E.L.D. anymore.
Right.
So your current agreement and all agreements in the state end on December thirty-first. Uh, might be re-upped, that, actually, everyone hopes it's not re-upped, really, to be quite honest with you, right? Don't we all hope that it's not re-upped, that we don't need it? That would be the hope. Well, let's say you get into October, you say, "I really want to be in S.H.I.E.L.D." You absolutely could come into our nurse's office, sign a consent form. But like anything, to, to have the security, to have a password-protected account for you and your family, that does, doesn't happen with a child standing there.
Sure.
You know, it's going to take some time, it's going to take a few days. Even to get my patient account, I went through that to get a patient account, it took me a few days to get a secure patient portal, uh, for myself. And that, you know, we experienced that in a lot of healthcare, um, you know, things that we do. So that, that's why we're encouraging, you know, sign up now. Um, get that out of the way.
But they do have the option if you choose to-
Yeah, but if it's not for you, then, then sign up later, if that's something that's going to help you. But what we're worried about is, you know, a vaccinated student symptomatic and says, "I want to take that S.H.I.E.L.D. test", we, we can't take it right on the spot, um, out of, out of security and privacy. We have a unvaccinated student who's a close contact, "I, I want to take it, I'll take it." We can't do that right on the spot, um, for the same reason. Yeah, Mr. Navara?
So does the S.H.I.E.L.D. also count for the variants?
It does, it does test for the variants, so it tests for, for all variants, right? So- And what, what I would encourage you to do, Mr. Navara, is I would encourage you to go to the S.H.I.E.L.D. website. Most of the webinars, most of them are for uni- from University of Illinois, uh, biologists, School of Medicine, Biomecular Engineering. They can explain to you the Delta variant protein makeup and how it mutated and how S.H.I.E.L.D., uh, picks it up. So that's a public website, uh, where that's loaded up, those, those, those webinars are loaded up. My recommendation to you, it, you know, it sounds like your questions have been answered. My recommendation is that you endorse this, obviously. Um, you know, if, if you don't have any more questions or analysis or thoughts. You're welcome, thank you.
So is this the part where we like talk amongst each other?
Okay, you all have your resolution in front of you, and it was in your board jacket all solved. Um, here, uh, just need a motion to approve the resolution.
Wait, is there, are we not allowed to, uh-
It's a moment, it's a second, then we discuss.
Then we discuss it.
So, someone?
Is there a second?
Sorry.
It's been motion by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that resolution? Zion, you had any?
Oh, is it, so is this the part where we're able to talk amongst each other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Well, I, I want to hear what everybody else has to say first, and then I'll give my own thoughts about it. Does anybody else have anything to say?
I personally don't like it, and I will not be voting in favor of it. I understand that- I understand that, uh, there's mixed thoughts about it, and, um, I just say where I, where I am. Who's next?
Freedom.
Nobody else has anything to say?
Yeah.
Okay, well, um, hi, everybody. I should probably introduce myself to the audience too. I'm Zion. Um, it seems like, according to the information that you did provide and the people here, it does seem that masks are pretty unfavorable. Um, first off, I should probably, um, tell you guys a few things. Um, I've also actually been hospitalized twice for influenza because I have a really weak immune system. And I've also been diagnosed with severe asthma, as I have been known to fall, faint multiple times simply from exercising. So, yes, I'm really bad at just breathing. Just the, of all the things you could be bad at, right? But it's because of the fact that I do have like a super weak immune system that I've always learned how to be careful about diseases. It's something you learn, not, you should learn from a young age, to wash your hands, cover your mouth when you cough or sneeze. And it's really not that hard. I think as high schoolers, they should also take the necessary precautions to do whatever they feel will protect them. Maybe they don't think that it's masking. Maybe there are people who will carry around those UV flashlights to be able to shine on different surfaces, to be able to clean it. I've also looked up, um, have you guys ever heard about like sonic cleaning? There's these frequencies where you can actually point at something. If you ever look at like how effective a sonic toothbrush is compared to a regular toothbrush, it's incredibly, like, accurate, simply because those sound frequencies are able to destroy diseases at the very core. And personally, I think that we as a district should also look at those different solutions to be able to see if UV lighting, if filtration, if sonic cleaning is an option to us. As you guys said in the last meetings, we should, if we take masking off the table, we should add new precautions to replace it. And I think as I have given three different solutions to it, we should embrace technology that is new to us in the advent of disease prevention. Let me tell you guys something. Did you know that this social distancing and these masks are what we've actually used to combat the Spanish flu? These are hundred-year-old techniques, and we have not really done much within disease prevention. If you look at every other industry and how they've improved in the last hundred years, planes have been going, have changed from doing thirty miles an hour to being able to break the sound barrier multiple times. Cars can go so fast that they actually melt the parts of their cars. And within the last hundred years, disease prevention has only advanced to ha- from hand sanitizers and baby wipes. That's the whole pinnacle of the disease prevention industry. So I think that we, as a district, do have a unique opportunity that we can capitalize on these new and emerging technologies and prove that maybe, as sort of like experimental, that maybe these are the new pinnacles of disease prevention for the future. We can not only stop COVID, but every other disease that can come after this by seeing how can we adapt the UV lighting, sonic cleaning, and different filtration systems? And probably even look more, have you guys heard about the, um, there's this one technique where you can take up, you can absorb the air around it, and it's supposed to, by reducing the pressure of the air, it causes the bacterias themselves to explode internally. There's another technique where you can superheat the area around you and cool it down so rapidly that the diseases and viruses will break down because of the tremendous heat and cold that you introduce to the given area. Now, that probably won't be a good idea on like surfaces that are flammable, but it's an option. So all I have to say is that like, I'm kind of a little bit upset that these options were also not considered in the new plan. And perhaps we should, even if all you do is put these new technologies in one room and see how differently it changes. You have the contact tracing. You have all of this technology where you can prove once and for all if these are effective. So I don't really know what else to say other than that, but like, yes, I do believe that we should experiment. At least take that leap of faith and experiment on new and emerging technologies that I know we have available and we have available at a reasonable cost. Even if it doesn't cost anything to the taxpayers, I'm sure we as a community can raise the funds for this. Because I know that a lot of you probably also have the same faith in these technologies. I can explain to you how they work, and maybe it does cost us, but I'm sure that if you guys do want an alternative to the masks, we do need something to replace those masks. Like, you know? I, I personally don't feel comfortable in a technique that has, you know, stayed constant for the last hundred years. I think we do need to look at these new technologies and see if they are our hope for the future. Because the reality of it is, maybe you guys don't believe that COVID is the superbug that is going to doom us all. It's ridiculous to think that COVID is that, that superbug that multiple medic, multiple fields of medicine have been predicting for hundreds of years, ever since the bubonic plague. Do you guys want to actually see what that superbug could be? Do you want to combat bubonic plague part two or Spanish flu part two? I don't think we have the ability to. We're completely screwed if we actually do encounter a disease that has been heralded and predicted by scientists for hundreds of years. And I think we need to be the people who take the first step to do that. At least, just in my opinion.
Thank you, Zion. It's been a motion, it's been second, so just need a roll call. You can make your voice or vote heard loud and clear for Kathy.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
No.
Navara?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez, can you go?
Yes.
Grace?
Public comments not listed on the-
Sorry, we'll leave after, we'll waste your time every time.
A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside. Take your comments on topics not listed on the agenda.
God has cursed all you.
Yeah, hold on a minute.
Got your survey, all your answers.
We want to see your bank account before and after the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing.
Thank you, my thanks, Zion. Rest of you, good luck.
A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside. Your comments not listed on the agenda. The person wishing to speak aside, the right of the making request, the same, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will-
Our seats has arrived at platform.
Still, I, I'm happy to talk to you. We, we just have to finish, but, but I'm happy to talk to you.
Losing that.
Do you care? Shame.
Thank you.
There's none, thank you.
There is none, alright? Okay, just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
It's been motioned by Ms. Lewandowski and seconded by Ms. Travis to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second item?
Wasn't it you?
Michael.
It was you, right?
Michael.